Okay. All right. Can we get order? Hello, good evening, we're gonna get started, thank you. Can we? All right, thank you. We have reconvened from our closed session and I'd like to make the following announcement. By a five to zero vote, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the case of Christian V. Miller and all as identified by case number on the City Council meeting agenda. With that, we will close or adjourn the special meeting at 6:01 PM and switch over to our regular meeting. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, September the 27th, 2023. It is 6:01 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/Universe Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned, will be webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Saturday, September 30th at 7:00 PM and Sunday, October 1st at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.eltgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or unmute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meetings. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card. Those are the blue cards that you might see at the back of the room or also up here and provide those to the deputy city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. And Mayor and council, just a few other housekeeping rules as we have quite a full house this evening and thank you everyone for being here to the meeting this evening. I would like to note that our fire marshal would like to ask that with our large crowd that we keep all exits clear, so those are the large sets of double doors at the back of the chamber, but you also note some blue tape on the ground that we would ask around those doorways that folks keep clear of congregating around those areas. We want to make sure that there's a clear egress away from the building in the event that that is required. So we thank you for your assistance with that. I would like folks to know that there is overflow seating in the foyer and our audience members that are in the foyer will still be hearing my audio going through that chamber. We also have large screen TVs so that you can view the meeting and be watching it in real time from the foyer where there is additional seating as folks may need. If you need restroom facilities or water, that is back into the foyer. If you exit the chamber, you would be turning to the right and another series of rights will get you down the hallway to where you need to go. As the last part that I will say as your city clerk is I'd like to say that manners matter and I would like to be very impressed tonight with our community displaying not only that when we come together, though we might have disputes, that we give everyone the time that they are allotted in order to express their thoughts and we greatly appreciate and I would, you get a special mark in my book for those folks that are here in the chamber. If there is an opportunity and we have one of our citizens that are a little more senior and might need seating up near the front, I would give you a tip of the hat if some folks were to offer their seats to those folks if they do need them, but there is the overflow seating, please don't forget that and otherwise I will hand it over to the mayor.
All right, thank you for that. At this time, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite up Mr. Michael Hill to lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, please join us for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. All right, next up, approval of the agenda and then for whomever makes the motion, we would like to consider item 9.2 right after item 4.1. So with that, can we get an approval of the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to approve that or to make that motion, but I would also like to add this evening at the close, if we could close in honor of Specialist Ty J. Johnson, U.S. Army. He died in 2006 giving his life in Iraq. We had the opportunity today, you and I, to meet his mom and his family, Gold Star Family, and so if we could close in his honor, I would appreciate it, please.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you for that, sir. All right, so we have a motion by our vice mayor?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, closed session, clerk.
There are no closed session items on the regular agenda, so that will advance us on to Section 4, our presentations and announcement, and that one item being 4.1, a proclamation recognizing Monday, October 9th, 2023 as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Wonderful. At this time, I would love to call up the Wilton Rancheria Tribe. Please join us here in the front. All right, Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 9th, 2023. Whereas the City of Elk Grove recognizes the contributions made by its first and rightful inhabitants, the Plains Miwok and other indigenous peoples, that have substantially shaped the character of Elk Grove, and whereas we oppose the systemic racism towards indigenous peoples in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbates disproportionate health, education, and social stability, and whereas we promote closing the equity gap for indigenous peoples through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of indigenous peoples, ensuring greater access and opportunity and honoring our nation's indigenous history and contributions, and whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations sponsored International Conference on the Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, and whereas the United States endorsed the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, the Declaration on December 16th, 2010, and the Declaration recognizes that indigenous peoples have suffered from historic injustices as a result of interalia, their colonization and disposition of their lands, territories, and resources. And whereas Article 15 of the Declaration recognizes the right of indigenous peoples to the dignity and diversity of their cultures, traditions, histories, and aspirations, which shall be appropriately reflected in education and public information, and places an obligation on states to promote acceptance and take effective measures in consultation and cooperation with the indigenous peoples concerned to combat prejudice and eliminate discrimination and to promote tolerance, understanding, and good relations among indigenous peoples and all other segments of society. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims Monday, October 9th, 2023 as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Elk Grove and urges all residents to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous people on this land, to promote the prosperity and well-being of the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, whose tribal headquarters is here in Elk Grove, and celebrate the thriving culture and value that indigenous peoples add to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Singh Allen and the City Council for welcoming us here today. My name is Jeannie McKean and I sit on the traditional court for the Wilton Rancheria. I am joined by fellow traditional court elder Frank Gastino and tribal council member Mark Andrews. And also we have some youth in the audience, which is always good. Okay. On behalf of the tribe, the descendants of the first stewards of this land, I would like to thank you for recognizing October 9th, 2023 as Indigenous Peoples' Day. We appreciate this resolution as well as a land acknowledgement you will be voting on shortly as both start on the path forward, excuse me, as both to start on the path toward truth and reconciliation of the painful history of the region and progress to move forward together as sovereign partners in the future. We will continue to work together for recognition and betterment and the well-being for our communities and all generations, past, present, and future. Thank you again for inviting us here today. It has truly been an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're gonna present the proclamation and take some photographs, but what I thought we would do is go on to our next item and then do the recognition together?
Sure, sure.
Would that be great? Okay.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. So we're going to go on to item 9.2, which is considering a resolution establishing a City of Elk Grove land acknowledgement.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Cara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. We're gonna talk about a city land acknowledgement proposal. So let's just take a moment to talk about what is a land acknowledgement and what does it do? So a land acknowledgement is a statement of respect for indigenous people who have lived in this region from time immemorial. It's an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those whose territory we reside on. It acknowledges hardships of indigenous peoples that they experienced and continue to experience and it creates a culture that celebrates, oh, sorry. I didn't want to touch the microphones. It creates a culture that celebrates and protects the heritage of indigenous people and it reiterates the city's message that we are city welcome to all. So there are other governmental and educational institutions in the region that have land acknowledgements. I won't read them here, but I do want to just acknowledge that the Elk Grove Unified School District recently adopted one about two weeks ago as well. So the City of Elk Grove's land acknowledgement is being recommended by the Diversity and Inclusion Commission and they have worked really hard this last year on this. There are several members in the audience and I don't, maybe they want to raise their hands? They worked really hard on this and I know it's a really important initiative for this committee, so I just want to thank them for their work. This was mentioned in the Mayor's 2023 State of the City Address as something forthcoming and it has been reviewed and approved by the Wilton Rancheria. So as proposed, the land acknowledgement has two parts. One is a version for verbal reading at meetings and then, and when the National Anthem is read and before the Pledge of Allegiance and then there's a formal city resolution. So both versions would be on a land acknowledgement page on the city's website and this action has no fiscal impact to the city. I'm gonna go ahead and read the land acknowledgement. "We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endure because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders." So staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution establishing a City of Elk Grove land acknowledgement and if approved, we would create a land acknowledgement webpage. We'd modify the City Council agenda format to include a space for the land acknowledgement and we ensure that staff is trained on the application of the land acknowledgement. So I'm here for any questions.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. We have Reyna Tarango.
So first and foremost, behalf on the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, I just want to thank council for all of your work and standing behind this and for really pushing that you guys wanted to make sure that the Miwok people, the traditional people, and the people of this land were acknowledged and that they are seen because they are still here, as you see, very present in our children, in the elders present here. I want to thank our commission, those who sat on the subcommittee, Tina, myself, Delia, Jase, Jessica, and you know, even former commissioner, Chairman Jesus Tarango, who at that time was, you know, really pushing that this land acknowledgement needed to be put out there and how grateful we are that you guys have done this. It's an amazing achievement for the city. It was beautifully done. You guys included the tribe, which was tremendous. Oftentimes they are overlooked, so we are truly grateful to have you guys as our council and to be able to be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else lined up to speak on this item, so I will close the public comment opportunity and I would also like to thank the Diversity and Inclusion Commission for your tremendous work bringing this before us. I know this was very important for myself and I know my council colleagues as well. This is long overdue and I'm just grateful that we are here at this point, that we can move forward with this very important land acknowledgement honoring and recognizing all of the tremendous work of our original inhabitants and all of the sacrifices that they continue to make every day. Thank you. Any other comments from colleagues? Yes. You do, go ahead, council members, sue.
Thank you, Mayor, and I echo those and appreciate the comments that you just made. I also want to thank Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission and the Wilton Rancheria Tribe for working alongside us to bring this forward. You all did the work. We're gonna take it across the goal line, so to speak, but you guys did all the hard work and so we thank you for that and it's great to see the contributions and the history of the indigenous people, the awareness that's being raised recently all around us. So I'm happily willing to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer?
And I definitely wanted to send a thank you to, to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, and the members of the community who worked together with the city to make the language as nice and tight as possible and for meeting with each of us to share your perspectives on the how and the why we came to this point because it was, it's very important that we work together as a community to show that and reinforce the tenets of teamwork, but also definitely as, as many of you are constituents of mine in District 2, I definitely am very proud that we are here today to make that acknowledgement. When the time is right, I'd like to move the motion to adopt the resolution.
The time is right. Would you like to move the resolution?
With that said?
Oh, did you have?
We have something else.
Did our vice mayor want to say something?
Say some speech?
Sorry.
No, I was, okay?
Oh, okay, I thought you were signaling.
I'm just waiting for a motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we would like to invite up the Wilton Rancheria Tribe and present the proclamation. And, um, would that be appropriate?
This is our son. He works with Dad, say hello. This is our youngest daughter, say hello. This is our mayor, say hello. This is the daughter of our youth mayor.
This is all for you, for the next generation. This is important that you pass your culture, your histories, and your stories so that nobody forgets ever, okay? That's all you, we're the superheroes for that, okay? All right, so, so we're gonna be looking there, so just all come in, be real comfortable.
Tall guy's always in the back, no problem.
Okay, we're gonna do another one and stay, stay put for the next round. Okay, and for the land acknowledgement, we're just gonna take another group photo without the proclamation, so I'll just fold it behind.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
It's good, thank you.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, man.
Oh, one more?
Right over the top of Sergio, that works. What's he trying to do to you, man? He's trying to box you out, man.
All right, we are on to public comment, correct? All right.
Correct.
So this is for items not on the agenda. First up is Lynn Wheat, followed by Kat M.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I would like to give a little history of the city and so tonight to do that, I wrote some information down that I thought that the audience might find of particular interest here tonight. Between 2002 and 2019, I kept track of our general plan amendments and rezones. We had 63 of them. Then we did our general plan update and since then it's been updated several times. The changes in the plan of, of course, have influenced our growth and development and the quality of life that we all appreciate. Of course, what has happened with that, with the environmental impact report, there was something called an errata or overriding considerations and I have that up here and I think that everyone in the audience ought to take a look at that. It is the shortest part of the document and you can find it as I have described. As I participated in the land use decisions of our city, I've seen many groups of neighbors rally to oppose issues directly affecting them and as quickly as they rally, they disappear following the council's decisions. That has really saddened me. I would like us to come together collectively as residents in our city and do as I do. I know it's difficult, but let's look at all of Elk Grove as our big backyard. In, in closing, I want to encourage everyone here to visit that website, learn a little bit more about your city. You might find it fascinating and to understand that traffic that we live with, they voted for it and it is only gonna get worse. Those adverse impacts of traffic are ours to live with. Now, of course, you can do what they mitigated for and we can all get on our bicycles and we can all walk everywhere and that'll take care of that traffic issue. Thank you very much. Oh, one more thing.
Can we please, please be respectful of the speakers? Thank you.
Okay, I do have another minute, so I'm gonna squeeze this in.
Thank you.
Water is a big issue in California and I've been following it closely, learning a lot, find it very interesting because besides the political points, there are some scientific information out there that I've appreciated learning. I collected these and I've left some in the back and you might find them as interesting as I did. It's a very easy read because that is gonna be the issue for our state and as we will be delivering, dealing with it locally with the Harvest Water Project, which there will be a meeting for anyone that wants to go from the general public on October 2nd at Laguna Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wheat. Next up is Kat M., followed by Kim M.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to read you something. Over 80% of pet cats in the United States are sterilized, with most litters being the result of accidental breeding. By contrast, only 2% of community cats are sterilized and can produce multiple litters each year. This results in a massive and ongoing influx of cats and kittens into shelters. This may explain why cats continue to be admitted to many shelters at a higher rate than dogs, despite the higher percentages of pet cats and over pet dogs being sterilized in most communities. Are we still the only ones that recognize a problem and recognize a solution? Why is this still not a priority almost one year after we brought this to your attention? At least back in October of 2022, we still had a veterinarian at our shelter. Now we have no vet and now we have no TNR services for community cats. What would you like me to tell all of the people that are asking me where to get the community cats fixed? What options do we have for sick and injured community cats now? The issue cannot wait. I have a list of over 95 people requesting food donations for community cats from our survey. Council members, have you considered locations where to place these donation bins? I hope you have and if you could send me that through email, you will have my email. Thank you.
Thank you. Up is Kim M. Kim?
Hello. Good evening, council members. As you all must know by now, Elk Grove's only staff veterinarian resigned earlier this month. The community of animal lovers is devastated to hear of her departure and wish her well in her new endeavor. Many of us here tonight are worried about what the future holds for our community's animals and what this will mean for the most vulnerable stray animals. We know there are estimates of 20,000 community cats living in Elk Grove. Trappers depended on a local TNR program to spay and neuter community cats to end the cycle of breeding. September 25th was the last day of the TNR program because there is no longer a veterinarian to perform spay or neuter. We have joined a zero club, a club reserved for shelters that offers zero TNR surgeries. It is easy to recommend the Sacramento SPCA as a resource when you are not the trapper waiting for six hours to have one cat spayed. Mondays through Saturdays, the trappers start lining up as soon as 1:00 AM. I have two SPCA feral clinic appointments for the entire month of October. For reference, I used to receive three or more appointments for two Sundays out of the month. I have heard a search for a shelter veterinarian is already underway and I am glad that they were quick to place an ad. However, as we've heard before, contract veterinary hospitals may not accept injured animals, including community cats, as they have to take care of their own patients first. Contract vets may not accept to work at Elk Grove Animal Services for any number of reasons, so may I suggest looking for two veterinarians? It is clear that we need two shelter vets. Having one egg in a single basket is not ideal, especially when it concerns animals and their well-being. Council members, now is the time to share your solutions that do not require hiring a veterinarian. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our final, our final public comment. I would ask if our city manager can address a little bit about the hiring process for the vet in your remarks. So that will conclude our public comment. I will close the public comment opportunity and go on to our general administration and information report from our city manager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, several items to report on. I'll just mention, first of all, the recruitment process for the veterinarian is underway and typically those positions are open for several weeks and we do a nationwide recruitment on that and we hope to fill the position as quickly as, as possible and we do have a transition plan in place to bring contract vets in to perform the services necessary. Working closely with our staff out there, so we're confident that we have a good plan moving forward to be able to provide the service. Working closely with our staff out there, so we're confident that we have a good plan moving forward to be able to provide the services necessary. All right. Continue with my report. First award to report on our economic development team was honored last week by the International Economic Development Council for the Startup Incentive Program. The program has generated eighty new tech jobs in Elk Grove and the surrounding region. Please join me in congratulating this team for their work to promote economic development, growth, and prosperity in our community. We're starting a series of budget meetings for the next fiscal year. Getting an early start and connecting with our community about the city's budget. Staff is preparing to launch a series of these presentations, including the Measure E Expenditure Plan. Our first presentation is scheduled this Thursday at the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting. We'll be asking residents to prioritize capital program projects and potential one-time expenditures. Similar opportunities will be available online as well. Look for details and opportunities to connect about the budget in our city communication channels very soon. An update on our library project. So earlier this week, the Planning Commission reviewed the design plans for the relocation of the Elk Grove Library to the former Rite Aid Building at 9260 Elk Grove Boulevard and recommended approval to the City Council. The Council will review those plans at the October 25th meeting. The project remains on schedule to begin construction next summer with a late 2025 grand opening scheduled. Regional SAN is hosting a community meeting at Laguna Town Hall, 3020 Renwick Avenue, on Monday, October 2nd at 5:30 p.m. to share information about the upcoming Harvest Water Construction Project. Project will build pipelines and a pump station to deliver recycled water to agriculture areas in Southern Sacramento County, including East Franklin, Laguna Ridge, and the Southeast Policy Area. More information available on the city's website. We heard, we did the recognition tonight for the Wilton Ranchery Indigenous Peoples' Day, as well as the land acknowledgement. The Wilton Ranchery and the City's Diversity and Inclusion Commission will honor Indigenous peoples at the next Cultural Connection Event, which is the California Tribal Showcase next Thursday, October 5th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at District 56. The special evening will feature storytelling, sharing California tribal history and experiences that reflect the sovereignty, resilience, and immense contributions that Native Americans have made to the state and the Elk Grove community. This is a free family event, open to all ages. City has launched a new online survey, asking residents their opinion about the environment, climate, and community. The feedback will be included in the Climate Compass and Elk Grove's Climate Action Plan. Responses will be accepted through the end of October. A link can be found on the city's website. Just a note, Elk Grove High School will host their homecoming parade next Friday, October 6th. To accommodate the event, there will be some road closures and alternative routes from 12:45 to 3:00 p.m. On several roads near the school, motors can expect delays and are encouraged to plan accordingly. And finally, the 29th Annual Elk Grove Giant Pumpkin Festival will be held in Elk Grove Park on October 7th and 8th. Giant pumpkin growers from all over California will compete in the wayoff on Saturday in the Pumpkin Regatta, which is the pumpkin boat race, returns on Sunday. The city is proud to sponsor this event hosted by the Cosumna CSD. Look for officers and other city staff onsite all weekend. Festival details are available on the CSD's website. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bierman. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing none, thank you. Next up is our consent calendar items. I'd like to open up the public comment opportunity. No one signed up for consent. I'll close the public comment opportunity.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, I do have just a brief statement on our consent calendar. Prior to consideration of those consent calendar items, staff would like to denote a debut practice under Item 7.15, in particular on consent. Under new law effective in 2023, as codified under Government Code Section 36934, ordinances can now be introduced without reading the title as part of the motion. So our prior practice, you would have known for differentiating from our resolutions, which we just do a motion in a second, our ordinances in the past, we've always had to read the title. That now, you don't have to read the title with the new law, as long as the wording of the title of the ordinance is included on the published agenda, and then copies of the full ordinance are available online and in print at the meeting. Our city practices, we were already doing those things, and so now we've just been able to segue into this new law. Going forward, there will be a brief time savings in some of our procedures. In particular, our CFD assessments and things, we'll be able to go through those a little bit quicker to adopt the ordinances, as those titles will not be required to be read as part of the motion. In not being required to read the title of the ordinance, it does permit the use of putting ordinances to be included in the motion to improve the consent calendar items. And that doesn't stray from too much of our practices, as all of our second reading ordinances we approve through the consent calendar. So it'd be very similar. Of course, that comes with the asterisk that's next to it, which is that for any ordinance placed on consent, those will be identified by staff to, like any consent item, be routine items that are non-controversial. And that's what we present under Item 7.15 for truck routes. And so any consent item, as we move forward in time, if you do see an item that you would like to discuss, City Council reserves that ability to pull the item for separate consideration as desired. But staff just wanted to make that note of new law changes that have allowed us to expedite some of these issues.
All right. Thank you for that additional information and clarification. With that, I will look for a motion to approve consent.
I'll move consent.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item, 8.1.
And that is a public hearing to consider a resolution approving the fiscal year 2022-23 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, the CAPER.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Alicia Tutt, your Housing and Grant Specialist. The item I have for you tonight is our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPER. This annual report describes how our community development block grant funds were used during the 2223 program year. The report is required to be submitted by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development within ninety days of the close of the program year. The report was included as part of your packet. However, to highlight some of the accomplishments, the city received $876,462 in entitlement CDBG funding, and those funds allowed the city to assist community-based organizations with financing to provide a range of new and expanded services primarily for low-income resident households. Funded projects included senior meals, case management, landlord and tenant for housing counseling, and a minor home repair program. The city also utilized CDBG funds to implement an ADA curb ramp and sidewalk infill project, bringing eighty-four curb ramps into compliance, and funded a public improvement project connecting a local nonprofit agency facility to an existing public sewer lateral. As part of the citizen participation process, a public notice was published earlier this month, and the report has been available in several public locations, as well as on the city's website, for a fifteen-day public review and comment period. We have not received any public comments prior to tonight's meeting. Tonight, I'm asking that at the conclusion of the public hearing, council approve the report so that we may submit to HUD. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you for that. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see anyone signed up for Item 8.1, so I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Mayor, I'd just move to adopt the resolution.
Very good.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next item, Item 8.2.
Item 8.2 is a public hearing to consider resolution approving the Oak Rose Apartments Project pursuant to Senate Bill 35 with the density bonus and concessions incentives in Affordable Housing Regulatory Agreement with Oak Rose Apartments LP.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, members of the Elk Grove City Council. Antonio Ablog, your Planning Manager, here to present to you tonight the Oak Rose Apartments Project. As far as the project before you tonight, the project is a sixty-seven-unit apartment building for permanent supportive housing with onsite offices for onsite service for the residents. The components of the project that are requested for action tonight are an action on the eligibility for Senate Bill 35 ministerial review process as it relates to the project, a density bonus with concessions and incentives. Those incentives and concessions would allow increased density and also allow residential uses on the ground floor within the Old Town Special Planning Area Commercial Zone. Also a component of that, as it relates to the density bonus, the project also includes an Affordable Housing Regulatory Agreement. I have a map with the project site up before you. The project site is approximately 1.23 acres. Again, that's in the Old Town Special Planning Area. The current designation for that, in that special planning area, is commercial. The address is 9252 Elk Grove Boulevard. The site is currently vacant. There are oak trees on the site, and I've noted some of the surrounding uses on the map on the screen. There's commercial uses to the north, the future library site to the east, low-density residential uses to the west, to the south, and high-density residential to the southwest. Also noted is an existing commercial historic building just to the west of the project site. Again, just some more details on the proposed project. It will be sixty-seven units. The buildings will, the building will be three stories tall. They will include six parking spaces. Because they are permanent supportive housing, the required parking spaces based on state density bonus law related to this type of housing is actually zero, but they are providing six spaces. And again, up on the front of the building adjacent to Elk Grove Boulevard, they are providing offices for onsite resident services. Just some background information on California State Senate Bill 35. State Senate Bill 35 provides for a streamlined ministerial review process for qualifying multifamily housing developments. That Senate Bill applies to areas that need to make further progress towards state-mandated regional housing needs allocation numbers. The city of Elk Grove is one of those municipalities that has been determined that it needs to make further progress. Therefore, the state, the city of Elk Grove is subject to the provisions of California Senate Bill 35. And just for some comparison to other municipalities, only eight percent of California cities have met their RENA goals and are exempt from Senate Bill 35. And just an additional note on Senate Bill 35, there is legislation on the governor's desk at this time. That's Senate Bill 423. It's currently awaiting signature, and that would basically extend these ministerial review provisions for multifamily housing developments. From 2026, it would extend that out to 2036. But the provisions would mainly stay the same and would require that streamlined ministerial review process. Again, under California Senate Bill 35, the city is required to apply the streamlined ministerial review process when a submitted project meets all objective zoning and design review standards. How the state defines that, I could provide that for you. As far as objective zoning and design review standards, it states standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and noble by both the development applicant or proponent and the public official prior to submission. For an example, this project is in the Old Town Special Planning Area. That special planning area does have some objective standards such as setbacks and height limits. A setback would be like seven-and-a-half-foot setback from the street or a thirty-foot height limit. However, it does also have subjective design review standards, such as the architecture shall be compatible with the historic nature of Old Town. A subjective guideline such as that is not applicable under SB 35. As far as the history on the project, this project was brought before the Planning Commission on June 2nd of last year for a design review public oversight hearing. That review was for a waiver of development standards under Government Code Section 65915E1, and that's under the density bonus statutes of state law. At the time, the applicant was requesting relief from the Old Town Special Planning Area guidelines, which do preclude ground-floor residential uses for that site. At that time, the commission did vote unanimously to find that the project did not comply with the Old Town Special Planning Area objective commercial zoning designation, therefore did not comply with the SB 35 objective standard criteria, and could not proceed with the streamlined ministerial approval process. The applicant did appeal that decision. It did, it was brought before the city council on July 27th of last year. At that hearing, the council did vote unanimously to deny that appeal. Similar to the Planning Commission, the city council found that the project did not meet the objective standards related to the ground-floor commercial use requirements. Therefore, the project was not eligible for the requested development standard waiver, and therefore ineligible for streamlining. After that decision was made in October of last year, October 11th, the applicant did file a lawsuit against the city. The applicant contended that the Oak Rose Apartment Project did qualify for the streamlined ministerial approval. Within that lawsuit, the applicant was seeking approval of the project and also unspecified money damages, attorney's fees, and additional costs. Following the lawsuit by the project developer on October 12th, the State Housing and Community Development Department did issue a notice of violation, alleging that the city violated SB 35 and other housing laws with its action determining the project not eligible for streamlining. And then, on May 1st of this year, both HCD and the State Attorney General's Office filed a lawsuit against the city, also seeking approval of the project and also seeking unspecified attorney's fees and costs with that lawsuit. So as far as the city's efforts in in response to those lawsuits, the city has spent considerable time and effort addressing both the claims from both the Oak Rose Development Team and HCD and the State Attorney General's Office. The city has offered an alternative development site with additional incentives. However, the Oak Rose Development Team has not entertained those up until this point. And at this time, to mitigate the impact of the litigation and risk of loss to the city, city staff, including the city's legal counsel, is recommending that the city reconsider approval of the project.
Please don't have me repeat this. I know everyone's gonna have an opportunity to speak. Let's be respectful to the speaker.
As far as the basis for staff's recommendation this evening, the applicant is requesting a density bonus. They're requesting an eighty percent increase of units, up to sixty-seven units. Under, under those density bonus provisions, which are state law, the current, as far as the current lawsuit, they did seek approval of a concession or incentive under a separate section of the applicable density bonus statute. That is Government Code Section 65915D. As far as that government section versus the government section that was discussed at last year's hearing, the concessions and incentives that are available under 65915D, applicable to density bonus law, they are broader in definition and have a wider application than the waiver that was sought last year. Staff has reviewed the available concessions and incentives under that statute, and based on that, staff has determined that the city council can allow for nineteen units on the ground floor with onsite offices for services for the residents. And the use of that concession and incentives exception for the ground floor uses would make them eligible for the SB 35 streamlining. Because they are seeking a density bonus, the density bonus does require that they enter into an affordable housing regulatory agreement. The affordable housing regulatory agreement is required in order for the project to receive the density bonus and a housing fee waiver. That regulatory agreement would restrict unit affordability and does provide some oversight rights to the city should the project be constructed. Regarding environmental review, should the city of Elk Grove should the City of Elk Grove City Council find that the project is eligible for SB thirty-five review, it would be a ministerial project and therefore exempt from CEQA. As far as fiscal impact, should they enter into a regulatory agreement, the project would be eligible for the waiver of the affordable housing fee. That would amount to just under $240,000. Before I conclude, I'd just like to note some comments that were received from the Oak Rose Development Team. The Oak Rose Development Team were provided with a set of draft conditions that were associated with tonight's request for approval. Based on those conditions, the Oak Rose Development Team did contend a number of those conditions based on the fact that they did not believe that they were objective or broadly applicable to other projects within our jurisdiction. Just mainly, they commented on conditions related to community facility district and maintenance district fees and annexations, construction and infrastructure requirements, site development standards, and also prevailing wage requirements. We've provided a memo to the city council with staff's response to each of those requests. And we've outlined whether those conditions we believe can be, can and should be retained, revised to be objective in nature, or removed where it has been determined that the condition is not applicable. So the action staff is recommending tonight, the staff does recommend that the city council adopt a resolution finding the Oak Rose apartment project exempt from environmental review, finding the Oak Rose apartment project eligible for Senate Bill thirty-five ministerial review, and approving the project with incentives and concessions and with the conditions of approval as amended via the memo provided to the council. Approving the density bonus for the Oak Rose Apartments project and also authorizing the city manager to execute an affordable housing regulatory agreement. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Avilock, for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and invite up the applicant or their representative to speak. Is the applicant or a representative available this evening? Mr. City Attorney?
I don't know that the applicant is here this evening. We spoke with the applicant's attorney on September eleventh and let them know that this hearing was set for this evening. And as Mr. Avilock noted, we sent them conditions of approval, draft conditions.
Representing the applicant?
Sir, are you on behalf of the applicant?
No, I'm not the applicant.
Oh, okay.
I'm speaking against the issue.
Oh, yeah, when that, when that time comes.
We'll get there.
I will be calling up names. Thank you. Thank you. Please, let's hear what our city attorney has to say.
So as I was saying, I spoke with the applicant's attorney on the eleventh of September, let her know that this meeting was going forward tonight and sent them conditions of approval as Mr. Avilock had said, draft conditions, on the twelfth, and give them an opportunity to review those if they like. On Monday of this week, the twenty-fifth, we received a letter from them, which has been provided to the council. That was a letter that Mr. Avilock is mentioning that made some comments and objections to the various conditions. And we've responded to those in the memo that was given to the council tonight, point by point. In that letter, the applicant has indicated that they do not intend to show up and appear at this hearing. And I'll just quote from the letter because they were, quote, "had not been invited to participate in this meeting." So I don't believe that they are here tonight. If they are here, they're certainly welcome to come forward.
This is a public hearing. There's ample notice. And you informed them that this was moving forward.
Yes, it had been noticed.
That this was on the agenda.
This is on the agenda. They have been notice of the meeting tonight, yes.
This is, I mean, this is disrespectful, and I'm so disappointed. Here we are in a lawsuit that they didn't have. Please, order, order in the chambers, please. That they didn't have the respect and the audacity to show up for a public hearing that they were duly noticed about. That, that, I'm very disappointed. They could have sent a representative, their attorney, Mr. Hio, somebody. Because this is, this is not a surprise. And so that is not unnoticed. And I'm very, very disappointed that a representative is not here, considering we are in active litigation. And the community is here to have this very important discussion. Thank you for sharing that information. I'm very disappointed. So I will open up the public comment opportunity. And we have a number of speakers. And I know that we, there are many passions perhaps on both sides. I ask of all of you, please be respectful. Please limit the cheers and the jeers. Let's give every speaker the three minutes and the courtesy that everyone deserves. If you wish to speak, you have the right to speak. Please speak. But please extend that courtesy to everyone, whether you like what they have to say or not. So I ask again of all of you, please just be respectful. I know you will do a great job because our city is great and all of you are great ambassadors of Elk Grove. So please, thank you in advance for complying with that. We will begin our public comment. First up is, and we've got little markers you can see down here in the middle. I will call the first three speakers and you can line up in that order. And then I will be going through the list here in the order that you all have signed up. So first up is Hillary Mendonka, Mendonka Jr., followed by Joe Kane, and then Lori Kane. Hillary, if you are here, please come up.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel? I had a couple of questions. I was just, I'm a member of Elk Grove, of course. Reside over by Bradshaw and Elk Grove Boulevard. My concern was, are we going to vote on this? Is the people going to have an opportunity to vote on this? Because I understood by Article, is it thirty-four of the state constitution, that we have a right to vote on this project. You're saying no. Currently, under state constitution requires majority approval by voters of a city or country for the development, construction, or acquisition of a publicly funded affordable housing project. That's in our Constitution thirty-four. So I just was wondering when we're going to have an opportunity to vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Joe Kane, followed by Lori Kane, and then Harold Van Dyke.
Thank you. My name is Joe Kane. I'm a professional engineer in civil engineering. We live within walking distance of the subject site. I would like to first thank city staff for their thoughtful work in preparing staff report recommendations and their willingness to discuss the project with concerned citizens. I would also like to thank the city council for your careful consideration of the facts and your thoughtful comments before your 2022 vote. I especially want to thank the city as an organization for offering alternatives and incentives to the developer, even though the developer chose to refuse those better solutions. The first mistake made by Accelerate Housing Group was to acquire a lot that is far too small for their intended use. The developer chose to invoke SB thirty-five, which reduced the zoning requirements to only the objective standards of the Old Town Special Planning Area. That was not enough for this developer. They chose to disregard certain objective requirements they found inconvenient. The unanimous vote of the Planning Commission and the city council were entirely appropriate because they were based on the facts. The facts were about the specific objective standards the developer chose to ignore, effectively disqualifying themselves from SB thirty-five ministerial review. Just yesterday, I saw a thought for the day that said, "Don't cling to a mistake just because you spent a lot of time making it." But that is exactly what Accelerate Housing Group has done, cling to their mistake. In my comments on July twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two, I spoke directly to Accelerate Housing Group by saying, "You never get a second chance to make a first impression." And bullying and strong-arm tactics are not your best look, nor your best position. Yet this is the path they have chosen. Do they expect to be welcomed into Elk Grove and into the Old Town neighborhood? To the city council, I understand that your vote today is primarily driven by the risks and the costs of litigation against the city. Today, I have a few suggestions. First, I think it would be helpful to clarify the qualifying criteria of occupants as well as any disqualifying criteria. This might help to narrow the expectations of concerned neighbors and business owners in Old Town. Second, as the developer used SB thirty-five criteria to severely reduce onsite parking, I recommend strong statements that future residents, if it's built, with vehicles, cannot park them on the city-owned right-of aid property just because the developer chose to not provide parking for them. Third, it might be helpful to benchmark the conditions, again, if this is built, near Elk Road Boulevard and Waterman before and after occupancy, if that happens. So the future impact of the development on vehicle pedestrian traffic can be measured and understood. In closing, I hope Accelerate Housing Group does not use unspecified damages of litigation to use the city as a deep pocket and to fund their project at the expense of our city's financial health. And to find out they don't want to pay assessment districts and they don't want to provide prevailing wage to labor is an insult to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up. Next up is Lori Kane, then Harold Van Dyke and Ben Upton.
Hi, my name is Lori Kane. I live in Elk Grove near the Old Town. I want to first thank city staff and the council members for their efforts to get the applicant for the Oak Rose project to cooperate with the city of Elk Grove. It is unfortunate that after requesting the project comply with the Old Town Special Planning Area and offering an alternative location with financial incentives that was suited for the project as proposed, Accelerate Housing Group chose not to do either. The developer of Oak Rose Project, Accelerate Housing Group, has shown disrespect to our city, especially the Old Town Special Planning Area, by refusing to comply with the zoning of the project site or accepting the city's offer for a land swap with incentives. I am greatly disappointed in the developer's unwillingness to cooperate with the city, the very city for which they want to become a part. The Old Town Special Planning Area is a very small geographic area of our city. Citizens, along with city staff, worked together for many years to create a special area in Old Town because it has a significance to the people of Elk Grove. To come in and disregard the zoning of this special area shows they are not trying to become part of our community. It is unfortunate. We are forced to allow a project that does not comply with the zoning of this project site. It sets a precedent that can cause a multitude of issues in the future for our Old Town Special Planning Area. If future projects are allowed to push for noncompliance, the OTSPA will lose the character that the city of Elk Grove and its citizens have zoned Old Town to have. The Old Town Special Planning Area was developed to preserve the essence of the city's founding year of eighteen fifty. And my last comment is about the architecture of the Oak Rose Building, which was not up for discussion under SB thirty-five. The modern design of the building does not fit in the Old Town. It does not resemble or have the character of a building from the eighteen fifties, and its modern design will look out of place. I am disappointed that Accelerate Housing Group and their architect have no regard for the preservation of our Old Town and made no attempt to design a building that blends with the architectural style of the OTSPA. I think this shows disrespect for Elk Grove and our Old Town. All of the decisions Accelerate Housing Group made were a choice. They chose an aggressive path to force acceptance of their noncompliance. Unfortunately, impression, the impression Accelerate Housing Group has left on the community will bleed onto Hope Cooperative, who will run the program once the building is ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Harold Van Dyke, Ben Upton, and up after that is James Bass.
Ms. Mayor, City Council, I was the other guy who said it was against our constitutional rights. It is. We should sue them. They sued us, we sue them. I mean, and we got to keep our, our, our city safe. And that's not going to be safe with that. And that's going to be an eyesore. And it's in the wrong spot. They pick what we have to do. We can pick where it has to be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ben Upton. I'm calling on Susan Coulson also to get in queue.
Bear with me, Mrs. Mayor. My wife has talked to you considerably recently. I don't know if you recall. I have a short statement that I'm going to read. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I would like to say thank you for fighting for our rights. And I think you guys have fought for our rights. And it's hard to be, I've sat on boards like you're sitting on. It's difficult. My name is Ben Upton. I have resided in Elk Grove for the entirety of my adult life. I was hoping to remain in this town that I love for the remainder of my life. Sadly, this is no longer a given as the proposed Oak Grove Apartments now face a litigation to deny our decision. This proposed Oak Rose Apartments is potentially going to offer housing to individuals that suffer from mental health instability and the disease of addiction. This will decrease the safety of our city. They are not telling us all the truth. They are real, there are real life and death implications in them overriding our rights. Who are they going to put in there? What kind of conditions are they in? Are they insane? They're drug addicts, insane, and we want them walking on our streets? Come on, you guys know better than that. This will increase an unhealthy and unsafe environment for our children and youth. Look to the Richard Chase and the Cannibal Serial Killer back in nineteen seventy-seven. He was a drug addict, and my wife personally knew the girl that he killed, cut out her baby and murdered her. It was terrible. And we're going to have people like that in our small community of Elk Grove. It's insane. This could lead to unhealthy and unsanitary conditions on the streets of historic Old Town where we host a variety of city activities. We build it up nice for the community, and we're going to let the homeless enjoy it, pitch intense. Come on, give us a break. Statistically, the amount of fecal matter and used needles increases in areas where individuals that suffer from the disease of addiction are located. This will impact historical Old Town vendors, storefronts, and the pedestrians walking about. This will endanger our children's safety, exposing them to an unhealthy environment. This will impact the housing market and devalue our homes that so many like myself worked a lifetime to achieve. This litigation has stripped us of our rights, as you can see from the group gathered here today as the protest, the countless rebuttals to the litigation and the hard and tireless work of the city council. I'm almost done. Our rights matter, and we want to fight for our great city of Elk Grove and for the most likely to be impacted in historical Old Town. The litigation is superheaded by State Attorney General Rob Bonkey and Governor Gavin Newsom are denying our rights, and they're idiots. I say as an Old Timber that both these people are done. They are violating our rights and design. This proposed Oak Grove Apartments will not adhere to the architectural requirements of the Old Town Special Project. One sentence. We have denied the proposed Oak Grove Apartments. We have made our decisions clear. Let us not be bullied by the state government. Let us not shy away. Let us keep fighting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is James Bass, Susan Coulson, and Randy O'Rourke.
I say give them hell.
Good evening, counsel. Before I start speaking, I want to, I want to make sure that everybody's aware that I'm not here because I oppose homelessness or homeless people. I know what it's like to come up from the bottom. I was voted most likely to be dead or in prison by twenty-one, okay? My own sisters thought I was going to be dead before twenty. I get it. I've been there. Never been homeless, but I know what that's like. Because I've been able to come up from that, because I've been able to be successful, I've been blessed enough to be able to give back to that community. I've volunteered with Elk Grove Winds many times. I've slept next to those people. I know what they are like. I know how they think. I know how they talk. I know what's up with them. Elk Grove Winds, as you're well aware, it already takes, it only takes like the best of the best, right? Of those folks. The people that are the most stable, the least risk. But even in that population, it's not uncommon for somebody to have an episode of some sort in the middle of the night, cause problems, and get kicked out. I've seen people fight. I've seen people injured. I've seen people sneak drugs and paraphernalia into that stuff. It's going to happen. Sixty-seven apartments, four hundred square feet each. That's not an apartment complex. That's a warehouse. That's going to turn into just like every other corporate-funded, taxpayer-funded, corporate-run homeless encampment that we see in New Jersey, in San Francisco, in Los Angeles. If anybody here thinks for a moment that they're going to want to move into one of those apartments eight months after it's been built, I got another thing coming. I want to ask you guys- I want to ask you guys what you stand for. Once you already voted to turn this down, what do you stand for? We elected this council to protect our community and to help us, to make this place a better city. You made the right decision once. Will you make the right decision again? Will you cave to some threats from a tinpot wannabe dictator in the Sacramento Dome? Or will you stand for the people of this community? By saying that this action is too expensive to defend, you're telling me that my kid's not worth it. Will you fight for my kid? Small kids are walking past that place every day on the way to and from school, I see it all the time. They're unattended. They're safe, they're happy, like kids should be. Will that continue? Is that man over there setting up an auxiliary station to be able to service that place when we're getting calls in the middle of the night? Are we going to see the ghetto birds circling that place every night?
Thank you, sir. Next up, Susan Coulson, Randy O'Rourke, and Bob Sadler, you're next in queue.
Good evening, my name is Susan Coulson. Let me give you a little background on my life here in historical Old Town Elk Grove. I moved here from South Sacramento when I was 16 years old, when there was nothing but fields from Franklin Boulevard to Elk Grove. I raised my family in a house on Waterman Road and Elk Grove Boulevard for 34 years. My kids walked the streets every day to and from school. They attended Elk Grove Elementary, Joseph Kerr, and Elk Grove High School. It was safe and a clean route for them to use, that many parents would agree. I worked for the school district for 20 years in the transportation department as a school bus driver, where I've seen Elk Grove and historical Old Town Elk Grove change for the better and for the worse. Throughout my career as an Elk Grove Unified School District bus driver, I have seen every part of this city and know the effects of placing a housing project in an unsuitable location where kids walk to and from school every day. Parents drop their young children off across the street at the Radcliffe Academy. Currently, I live in my husband's family's, sorry, I live with my husband in a historical Old Town Elk Grove. I have witnessed almost every piece of land get developed from South Sacramento to Elk Grove throughout my 57 years of residing in the Sacramento area. The streets of historical Old Town are already congested. We already have a good share of low-income housing right here in the middle of the town. The plot of Hunger Apartments at 9205 Elk Grove Boulevard is round by the Sacramento County. We also have Elk Grove Food Bank on Dino Drive. I had faith in my city officials to step up and represent the community like they were voted to do, and find a suitable, safe spot to build this housing project that would benefit those in need, as well as giving the new parents and families in this community the same comfort I had while my children grew up and were raised by this community. I feel the city lacked a sense of what this community needs way back when the empty piece of land was for sale. I want to know why the city didn't purchase this land in historical Old Town Elk Grove. I feel the city let us down while it was for sale for two years or more before the group from Long Beach bought it. As an example, the Ghost Mall sat empty while metal rested and became an eyesore for anyone traveling up and down Highway 99 for years until the casino came in and saved the city officials. Let me say, I'm not against this project, I'm just sad that the city is throwing in the towel to help find a better solution and a better spot to build this housing project. Whether it's for the homeless, or mentally challenged, or recovering addicts, it's just not a good spot. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy O'Rourke, then Mike Guttridge and Bob Sadler.
Well, here we are again. Okay, and I'm going to have the same speech. You guys screwed up in the beginning, and that caused us this problem with the SB 35. This isn't their fault, this isn't their fault, this isn't their fault, this is our members' fault. Now, it may not be you guys that were here, but the fact is, you inherited something that you need to fix, okay? We have been here, I've been here for 32 years, love Old Town, bought an investment property in Old Town because I believed in it. I believed that you guys would be backing us, okay? Right now, we got some San Diego punk pushing us around, and like the hat says, not in a small town, okay? We need to be that small town, and you guys need to be the small-town fighters for us, okay? When they don't show up here, that shows disrespect, you admitted that. When they just shove this stuff down our throats for the first time, saying that we're just going to take this property, that is an insult, okay? And the fact is, what we need to do, and I don't know how we can do it, I don't know how much it costs to sue these punks, but we need to be transparent. You guys need to tell us, okay, it's going to cost us a million dollars to sue these guys, okay? And what are the chances? Legal can help us with that. I know that's a lot of money, there's plenty of GoFundMes for just about everything else, okay? We can do a GoFundMe here for Elk Grove, okay? You know, I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm mad, yes, I'm pissed off because this week, and this week is only Wednesday, I've had to take and kick out three homeless people out of my parking lots, and I, they need to go somewhere, yes, but not in Old Town, okay? We have too many kids down there, we have too many older people walking down there. We already have issues with the creek, with the homeless, where they accost some of our neighbors. Now, we just need to all work together, okay? Yeah, I'm pissed off, yeah, I'm probably speaking a little loud, and I might say a couple of bad words, but I don't cry, okay? I'm not going to cry, because I'm going to look these people in the face and tell them, go somewhere else. And I need you guys to do that for us, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Mike Guttridge. Next up is Mike Guttridge, then Bob Sadler, then Randy Becker.
Hi there.
Oh, okay.
This won't take long.
You are, sir?
My name is Bobby Sadler.
Oh, okay. We'll go to Bob Sadler.
My name is Bobby Sadler, I'm a resident of Elk Grove since 1973, I've lived here for 50 years. I'm an attorney, I'm inactive now, but I'm still a member of the California Bar Association. I'm going to try to show you who you're dealing with here. I think people have told me that Ron Bonta is a progressive attorney. I think he's a politician, he's not an attorney at all. I don't think he's ever worked a day in his life, dug a ditch, or fixed a car, or mowed any grass. That's who I think he is. He was appointed, he was Assistant DA in San Francisco, and he was appointed by Governor Newsom April 23, 1921. He was elected to a full term in, I'm sorry, in 2021, and he was elected to a full term in 2022. Here's an actual article. "To Consider Regarding the Progressive Attorney, Attorneys General in Toto." This is from the Daily Caller, February 23, 2022. The title is, "Here Is the George Soros Connection to Attorney General Supporting Mexican Gun Manufacturers Lawsuit in the United States." It should, the text goes like this. It should be, it should raise eyebrows when 14 attorneys general from the United States, that would be from 14 different states, side with a foreign national government, Mexico in this case, to, in a gun lawsuit against gun manufacturers in the United States. And this is, it should raise, it'd be better if I, it should raise eyebrows, California's Democratic Attorney General, Rob Bonnta, carried the water for George Soros as a California Assemblyman. He introduced legislation that would require district attorneys to recuse themselves from investigating police use-of-force cases if they had received money from police unions during their election process. This would enable a path to clearing out district attorneys so that Soros-backed progressive candidates sympathetic to defund the police movement and cash back cashless beer mail policies.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up, sir.
I'm sorry?
Your time is up, sir.
How come we had to listen to this big mouth for eight minutes?
No, he's presenting. Our comments are three minutes a person.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to point out.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next up is Mike Guttridge. Then Randy Becker, and then Lars Yant, or Yant?
Been in this fine city since 1945, 45. And as you know, we have built about 1,000 houses in Elk Grove, and shopping centers and other things. And here we're talking about to take some property that is an Old Town and try to do something with it from somebody in Los Angeles. Now, why? You know we got developers that would develop the land right here in Elk Grove because they are developers here. But why are we letting people from LA tell us what we're going to put on the land? You know, when we were doing it, and I, you know what I'm really, like you said, what I'm really upset about is they couldn't even show up for the damn meeting? For 50 years, my dad and I went to the meetings where we were doing, when we were putting in property. Every meeting. And these guys can't even show up, even a representative? Why? Why? And what I would say is, what we should be looking at is, we've gone this far now, we ought to be looking at a land use attorney. Now, why do I say that? You're going to have to get somebody that knows, and I presume the gentleman knows some, but there's a lot more to it than that, knowing what we went through for 50 years developing property. So I think you ought to be thinking about a land use attorney and see what it's going to cost, and let the people out here know what it costs, so they can make up their minds if they want to go forward and sue the state. And I think that's well worth thinking about. The problem is, everybody's afraid because it's the state of California and it's the great Mr. Newsom and people. Come on, we're as good as they are, if not better. So we should be ready, ready to say, okay, we might have to take some money out of our pocket and put it in a fund or something so we can get a land use attorney, which I know a couple of them, and they would at least give them a good shot at it. And I think that's really important before you just vote to say we should do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Randy Becker, then Lars Yant, and Lloyd Wallace, if you want to get in queue.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council staff, and all my wonderful neighbors behind me. Old Town Historical District is about all we have left. Out of everything that we have lived through, that's it. One little piece of property up and down the Boulevard. To build something like this in historical Elk Grove is wrong. We're not against homeless, we're not against people that need housing. I think the city has proven to be proactive in opportunity. It saddens me, saddens me, because I worked for it. It saddens me to find out that both our state legislative representatives voted against our ability to plan our city. And I can tell you right now, it will not go unnoticed. I like both of them, I think they're great people, but I got to stand on the town and city that I have lived since I was 17 years old and fight for every minute with the residents behind me. We're not done. I don't know what the five of you are going to do, but I'll tell you this, the city is not done. We are not. As far as the applicant and their outrageous behavior is a replica of CNU. They both need to be in the same coffee cup, or better yet, close your ears in the toilet. Because it's really sad for that kind of behavior for people that are willing to sit down and talk to them. We've got, we've got citizens that are actually willing to sit down and understand what they want to do. We're willing to listen. Yes, we fought last year, we fought because of the OTSPA. The state has showed us that we can't fight on that anymore, sadly. They stole that. They stole that away from us. Flat ass stole it. And the sad, and another sad thing is, it ain't over with. If people think that, that all these fields around here aren't going to fill up with apartments and low income and this and that, they better think twice, because all these SBs are going to be the developers' best friends. Sad. Very sad. We're not done fighting. So we need you to understand that we need to go and continue the conversation and still offer alternatives.
Thank you, sir. Lars Yant, then Lloyd Wallace, and Alexis Yant.
Good evening, City Manager Berman, Mayor Singh Allen, and council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My name is Lois Yant, and I've been a resident in Elk Grove and Wilton for 36 years. For the last 20 years, we have lived in the Fieldstone Community near Old Town Elk Grove. We've raised our two children in this community and make an effort to frequently visit and support the local vendors and restaurants in Old Town Elk Grove and the four corners at Elk Grove Boulevard and Waterman. It's truly unbelievable that the city council is considering the Oak Grove Apartment Project and a homeless sanctuary in Old Town Elk Grove. Before you make these decisions before you tonight, I hope you have visited this area of Elk Grove and noted the large numbers of children, families, and businesses. Have you observed this area before and after school hours, on the weekends? Well, I have for 20 years, and this is what you will see. These locations are walking distance from the businesses our youth and families walk and ride their bikes. Jamba Juice, Starbucks, Pizza, Subway, CVS, Bel Air, karate lessons are just a few. Within walking distance, less than a mile, there are two daycare centers and multiple parks. This is a very busy, family-friendly neighborhood that has kept many residents in this area due to safety, location, and services. This location is also walking distance to the heart of your Old Town Elk Grove, the Elk Grove we love. And you have been working hard to rejuvenate and attract businesses, thank you. Your actions to approve the Oak Grove Apartments and Homeless Sanctuary will be detrimental to this thriving area. I understand you are faced with a daunting task to find a solution and shelter for the homeless. There has to be a better solution than placing them in the middle of a family-friendly neighborhood. Why are you putting all of this in Old Town Elk Grove? Please do your job as elected officials, keep your youth and families safe. Don't put homeless, potential drugs, alcohol, and addicts in the pathway of our children. I implore you to look at other options. I pray your decisions tonight will keep the residents that voted you into office safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lloyd Wallace, Alexis Yant, and Dee Madruga.
Hello, my name is Lloyd Wallace, and I look at this board and I see people that I voted for over my two-plus decades here in Elk Grove. Mr. Swin, Mr. Spees, Mr. Brewer. Mr. Swin, Mr. Spees, Mr. Brewer, Bobby Ellen Singh, I didn't vote for you. So I'd be lying if I said that, but--
It's okay. Not everyone's perfect.
I'm not gonna do that. But my point is, this isn't about the homeless. It really isn't. Especially to the Oak Rose developers, it's not about the homeless. Because if it was about the homeless, those Oak Grove or Oak Rose developers, they would have accepted your offer to switch lands and build this somewhere else more appropriate. Like, all the reasons that were stated here tonight, the children in our community, the elderly in our community, that area, Old Town Elk Grove, is starting to thrive. I've lived in the neighborhood near there, in Waterman Ranch, for two-plus decades. And my children, they're grown men now, but they used to walk past there. They went to the schools around there, the parks around there. And I worked in a correctional environment for a long time. And those problems that are in there will develop in that area. Those-- and I'm not saying those people or whatever, because everyone falls on hard times. But the appropriate place for this is not in Old Town. It's truly not. And your job is to fight for us. I voted for you. The money that you're saying that we're saving in a lawsuit, that's my money. That's all these people's money, their hard-working money, their taxes. And so, in this particular instance, you need to be the fighters for us. It's our money. And the funny thing is, Mr. Oblong-- did I say your name right? When he was talking about Oak Rose, the one word that he said several times was "exception," "exception." Why are we making an exception for Oak Rose developers? Let's make the exception for Elk Grove citizens. That's who we need to make the exception for. And when I heard him say that word several times, we don't have to-- we can find another place within Elk Grove that is more appropriate than the area that's chosen. And you're gonna put-- a gentleman earlier said, "It's gonna be a warehouse of people." Sixty-seven residents in that small area, it's gonna be a warehouse. We're gonna be warehousing people. And we don't want that, so fight for us. That's why we voted for you. That's why we entrusted you with our hard-earned money that is taken out in taxes every time we purchase something here, every time we go to work, fill up our gas tank. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alexis Jant, Dee Madruga, and Joe Madruga.
Thank you for letting me speak here today. My name is Alexis Jant, and this is Avon Rodriguez. We are both sixteen-year-old girls, have been a part of the Elk Grove community since we were born. Coming from a younger person's point of view, I go to the local businesses around where the location where the Oak Rose Apartments and homeless shelter are going to be built almost daily. I have walked to these locations with my friends, dog, and family for many years. Many others and myself will now feel unsafe going to the local stores and parks we visit every day. I have always felt safe going to the local stores around the area, but now with the incoming homeless shelters, I'm afraid I won't be able to feel the same. I would like to know why the homeless can't be moved to a better location, not next to schools and a bunch of places where kids my age and younger hang out. It is already really concerning, being a young girl in this world we live in now today. Why do we have to make our hometown feel more unsafe? There are people that are going to be put in the homeless shelter that should not be around kids my age and younger. Therefore, it is gonna be unsafe in general. I'm sure you all have heard the quote, "Don't worry about something you can't control." Well, you all can control this. Please consider your vote to help the Elk Grove community and the younger generation.
Dee Madruga, Joe Madruga, and Leo Narajo, you're next on deck there.
Good evening. I'm Dee Madruga. My husband Joe and I own the cute little one-hundred-plus-year home next door to the proposed building project. I would first like to have a show of hands of people in this room who would be happy if they could have a three-story building built alongside their driveway of their home. Well, looks like there aren't too many takers, and I don't blame them. This is exactly what we are facing, my husband and I, right now. We will have thirty-three windows facing our back door with possibly thirty-three men watching our daughter as she comes and goes with her business. There will be another thirty-three windows on the other side of the building where thirty-three more men watching children come and go at the library. This complex should not be put here. Time will prove this true. Are you prepared to pay for the injuries caused by this decision? Please use common sense and reject this proposal so we can all breathe a sigh of relief. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Joe Madruga, Leo Narajo, and Dennis Williams.
Good evening. My name is Joe Madruga. My wife Dee and I own the little house next to the site of the construction project. We oppose the project because of many safety concerns and because of its location. I don't know why the developers are so fixated on this location. It doesn't make any sense. However, you as our elected representatives tend need to be very concerned with the location. So concerned that I think you need to read and understand the basis for this concern. It is the Elk Grove Old Town SPA. SPA stands for Special Planning Area, and that's what this is, a special area. Just let me read the opening words of the Old Town SPA. Quote, "The Old Town Elk Grove Special Planning Area is the policy document and zoning code that has been established to preserve and guide development in Old Town Elk Grove," old town, unquote. This is taken from the original document in which Sacramento County established Old Town in 1985, fifteen years before the city, our city, was created. It seems that Sacramento had a better idea of what Old Town should be than we have now. The work and study went into this effort is incredible. It is filled with charts, graphs, statistics, maps, and lots of text describing the history and potential surrounding the city. This is an element in the plan called transportation. This rung a bell because they were discussing an update to the transportation segment of the SPA at the planning committee meeting held on Thursday night, September 21st. Christopher Jordan was explaining in detail the changes they would make and the impact of the mixed-use stage, usage on the ground floor not being an issue. I don't recall him mentioning the Oak Rose Apartment specifically, but it seems like this would have had an impact on the discussion. What I'm saying is that in any change to Old Town Elk Grove deserves to proceed very carefully and very slowly to ensure that Old Town is safe and protected from the changes that we are only, that we may regret later on. I recommend that the council postpone this hearing until all council members have had a chance to read and understand the Elk Grove SPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Leo Narajo, Dennis Williams, and Jackie Perez, please join the queue.
Good evening, everybody, and if I can star off with, I like you. You should be an announcer somewhere. You got that voice. With that being said, I want to thank the citizens of this city for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, mainly because of the travesty that's unfolding since I've moved here and see what you're getting ready to enforce on the citizens of Old Elk Grove. I'm not a lifelong resident. I haven't been here but for two years. My family moved here from Sacramento because it was a nice quaint little city. It is a nice little area, and it was something that we could live in for a long time. I hear the stories of people that have been here for ages, generations, and it really tears at my heart to see what they're gonna now go through from your decision. Sixteen-year-old girls came up here and told you from a teenager's perspective what they could possibly face. But I know your staff members don't care because they just give you reports. Older people that come up here and tell you the impact it's gonna have on their lives, but I know you don't care, much less to staff, because that's not what they do. And while staff does all this formulation of models and reports and everything else from you, they have no vested interest in this project because they don't care. All they do is give you reports. These people didn't elect staff. They elected you. And somewhere in the election process, I'm pretty sure you told every one of these people out there, "Vote for me because I will fight for you." Obviously, that was a lie from the beginning. "Vote for me because I will stand up for what's right in Elk Grove." Seems like another lie for number two. "Vote for me next year as I run for reelection if I can because I'm gonna stand against the progress that'll hurt this city." That's a chance that they would have to take. I asked them for time, time for me to be able to clear my job to have a different conversation with this council eight months from now. But from what I've heard, the so-called project will be done in eight months? How disgusting. That's the fastest building that's ever been accomplished in Sacramento County in years. But we're moving forward. You say you fight for the residents of Elk Grove, but all I see you here is caving because you got threatened by a governor in Sacramento who cares nothing about the citizens of this state, much less this city, this county, or anywhere else. You worried about some AG that's supposed to be defending them from crime? His only thing is to attack parents on what they believe and to attack this city because you failed to put a homeless population center in the middle of their neighborhood. There's all kinds of places to put this center. In the middle of downtown Old Elk Grove is not one of them. Those people couldn't show up here tonight to face you people because they're cowards. One simple word: cowards. They don't have any vested interest in the city. They don't have any vested interest in these people. All they have is a dollar sign that they're gonna get, wipe their hands of it, and then leave it to the citizens of Elk Grove to deal with the consequences. And I pray that that gentleman never has to report to these people what happened to one of those girls because you allowed that travesty to be in this state.
Thank you. Thank you. Dennis Williams?
Hi, I'm Dennis Williams. I'm here to take a look at what we need as a city and to consider what that behavior is. I'm not a drug addict. I'm not an alcoholic. I'm a friend of God. And I'm a friend of the people of this city, this beautiful city. I love our police department. And I actually like-- you people too. I like-- I actually like you. I know your job's really hard. Okay, my point is that when you're talking about a certain type of population, as you are with the housing these people in a certain location, a certain type of care for these people, you're talking about a whole system that's almost undefinable, that you cannot control the behavior of these people. And that's what, from what I was listening to tonight, that's what you're trying to do. And you're trying to become a partner of somebody that doesn't even know about this city and wants to build a building and have you, have our police department-- you want to pay them to take care of all those people, and yet they can't even look at my house and get the traffic out of my street in the morning because the parents are breaking the law to drop their children off right in front of my house. Now, if you don't know how to do that, then what are we talking about controlling people who are unpredictable? The doctors don't know what to do with them. We don't know how to take care of them properly. And they actually are people that don't want to be taken care of properly. And so, when you talk about this, and then you notice that the people that are trying to do this and build this are not even friends of Elk Grove. And we have people here-- I mean, we're all doing some pretty good behavior tonight, right? Okay, we're really controlled. We know how to speak. We're kind people. We love each other. We know each other, talks a little bit, you know? And, okay, I gotta get off. But, okay. Nobody knows here what's going on. And do we want a certain type of thing to happen at a certain place in our city? And most people here say no. So, we're not doctors and we're not psychiatrists. And so, we can't define this answer like in a system--
Thank you, sir.
--in a system. But we don't-- the answer is--
Thank you. Okay, next up is Jackie Perez, then Dee Dee Perkins, followed by Perry Leonard.
I'm not good at writing things. You guys know that because you've heard me lots of times on Jackie Perez. And my family are the two people that spoke, Joe and Dee Madruga. We own the house on Elk Grove Boulevard right next to this project. I kind of want to address everybody here because I love Elk Grove and I just want to thank everybody so much for being here and trying to support us from not having this built. And I hope that someday you're not going to my funeral because my shop is right next door to this project. And I have girls like those two girls that were amazing girls working for me. Do you think that people are not going to be watching our daily moves and what we do and how long we stay at the shop and how often we go in and out of the house putting things in the cooler? I think this is a terrible idea, a terrible idea. And I also want you guys to try to take all their energy and try to feel what we're feeling. Because we're scared, we're upset, we're sad. And we really, really want you guys to try to work harder for us. The other thing is, I know this is off-topic, but it's all put together. The library meeting that I went to the other day-- these people don't know this, a lot of them, because there was only four of us there-- they're building in the parking lot benches with shade, with string lights for people to read. Do you think people reading are gonna be sitting there? No. The men or the people that are trying to find something to do are going over there. And I feel like that's a plan. I do, I do. Because they also asked if there was gonna be coffee and water they could come get every day. Well, who do you think's gonna do that? The other side on Waterman, they're having a children's area where they can sit outside so they're even easier and more accessible to these people. It's just, I feel like it's a gymnasium for the homeless shelter. I'm sorry, whatever you guys want to call it. I think it's--
Ma'am, if you want to face forward so we can get--
I want them to hear because they need to know.
They can hear because the speaker--
So also, there's an immigration attorney office right next to where Tom's Feed used to be. And behind that, there's a bunch of tiny homes being built. We would really like to know what's going on over there, too. Nobody knows. So there's things going on that you guys are not telling us. I know everybody's thanking you, but I don't feel very comfortable about what's going on in our historical Old Elk Grove. I just, I think you guys need to be more honest. And don't just do it, and then when it's too late, it's too late for us to say anything. I don't think that's right. And-- I just want you to try to feel our feelings. This is our town. We've probably been here longer-- I don't know, maybe not, but I know I've been here since before Highway Five was built, so I've been here a long time.
Thank you. And Jackie, if you want to connect with our, maybe our city manager on at least the sheds.
Yeah, because I'm sure they had to get approval, right?
So, they're not tiny homes, just for-- but if you want to get-- or if you want to follow up with me later, we're aware of it. Thank you.
They have--
It's public comment. We're on this agenda item only.
They have windows, they have doors--
We're aware, thank you.
They're not sheds.
Thank you. We're aware. Next up is Dee Dee Perkins and Perry Leonard. Next up is DeeDee Perkins and Perry Leonard. And then says Perry Leonard's wife, so Mrs. Leonard.
Good evening. I didn't prepare anything, so hopefully I won't ramble too much. First, I wanted to point out that we became a city because we felt that the supervisors were just doing whatever the heck they wanted to do in Elk Grove. Seems like the state is trying to do that as well. Now, I'm not an attorney, but it's my understanding, I did read constitutional law, that it's my understanding that the state of California, or any of the states, are responsible for the health and safety of its citizens. Doesn't sound like they're doing that, which we might have standing to sue them. I walk in this area all the time. I walk at night sometimes. I'm from Los Angeles. I'm from South Central. I might be able to deal with them because you could take the girl out of the hood, but the hood is still in the girl. But not everybody has that background, especially Sacramento. If they were born here, it's just totally different. And I don't wanna see this place turning into what seems to me like the projects. And I'm not against this. I think that there's a place, but not here. That's it.
Perry Leonard, then Mrs. Leonard and Melissa V.
Good evening. My name is Perry Leonard. I live and work in the affected area. I think I know what spooked the staff into changing their recommendation. One, the state starting a lawsuit. And second, I've seen the cases, and it seems like no one who has raised an SB 35 challenge has won. Huntington Beach tried to raise a constitutional issue, saying that the state did not have, was essentially making them rezone the land to make room for supportive housing. They lost. Berkeley did not want supportive housing built over a Native American burial site. And they won in district court, but they lost on appeal because I feel they used the wrong law, which said that the project could not destroy an historic structure. And the appellate court said that it was not a structure, it was just a site. Los Altos claimed that the project complied with all the objective planning criteria but was built over a hazardous waste site. But the court said that 20 years had passed and they really hadn't produced any evidence that the area was still hazardous. Cupertino okayed a supportive housing project in a fashion mall. The community members sued, claiming it had a duty to deny a project that did not comply with objective standards. The court said that the law does not imply any such duty, which it actually does not. I assume we raised all the issues in a timely manner. We have objective zoning and building standards for the SPA in place, and they were in place before the proponent's application was submitted. We're not raising constitutional or other issues. And personally, I do not see how the proponent's arguments could even stand up to a summary judgment motion. No one disputes the facts. The facts are very evident, and we should win as a matter of law. The staff is advising that the city be ready to let the proponent build and pay the proponent damages, costs, and legal fees. A few more days or weeks to make a summary judgment motion if we're not gonna go to trial on this is not gonna make a big difference in the amount of money that we spend. So, if we have not submitted a summary judgment motion, I ask that we do so before we give up.
Mrs. Leonard, Melissa V., and Brooke Chapel, Chappell? Hi.
Yes. Well, that's the man I married 30 years ago and put through a George at the age of 46 when he was sick with cancer. But I wanna thank you all for being here. But I wanna thank all the people behind me for speaking. And I'd like to elect this man here for mayor. What? The one that was so outspoken. Been here two years.
Been here two years.
Yes, you. I'm telling you, you are the elected officials. Be strong, be courageous, walk in faith, just say no. And if I, you know, I, my husband bought me that piece of property at Radcliffe because I wanted 12 children. I couldn't have them, so I did the daycare. And that was 30 years ago, and he did that for me. Please, that house is almost 100 years old, and we will lose all of our businesses and around there. We'll lose CBS, Starbucks, and pretty soon Bella will pull out. Trust me, we'll lose those businesses. And I'll, and I'll have to lose my business that I've worked so hard to build with no complaints from the state of California licensing. So, please help us. All I can do is cry, and all he can do is stand up for the law. So, if you need him to fight for you, you should call him because he will help you. He's never lost a case, so please, even if it's educational law, he'll help you. He'll dive into that aspect of it. And there'll be other attorneys if we ask them to come and help you. There are other attorneys in Elk Grove. They'll come and help. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Melissa V., Brooke Chapel or Chappell, I apologize for the pronunciation. And then Robert Patterson, if you wanna get on deck.
Hi, my name is Melissa. I wanna preface what I'm about to say with, I was homeless. I slept in my car. I slept in dirty motels. I grew up on the south end of Stockton. So, if anyone's familiar with the area, Charter Way, the fairgrounds, that was me. And I have worked incredibly hard, incredibly hard, to pull my family out of that environment and move to Elk Grove almost over a decade ago. I'm very passionate about this city. My daughter sat on the student council here for you. We're very involved. We are contributing members to society. We pay our taxes, we mow our lawn, we, you know, pull our trash cans in. We do everything we can to be productive members of society. And so, I just wanna preface what I'm about to say. It's not about not getting help because that's not the case. I would fully support somebody getting help, but this is not what this company is standing for. If it was, then they would be open to what we've had for incentives. They would be here, you know, to face the city. So, that's not what I'm saying. What I am saying is fight. The city received over, I believe, $500 million from the casino. We've had a 1% tax increase. We have money, okay? Do not be fooled. The city has money, okay? We can fight. We don't need to be cowards against somebody who's sitting in Sacramento who has no idea what's going on in Old Town Elk Grove. My kids grew up here. We walk that path almost weekly. Almost every night, we're walking that path. We walk up to Bel Air, we walk up to Starbucks. My kids drive that every day to and from school. We have worked really, really hard. I'm begging you. You guys did the right thing the first two times. Please, please do not back down. Don't back down. Use the resources we have. The lady who was just here, if we could, if we could, you know, offer the support from our community, from other attorneys, do it. Do whatever you can. Elk Grove, when COVID hit, was all pounding their chest. We're leaders, we're leaders. We're leading the way of how we're handling things. You could still do that. You can still do that for this issue. You could tell the state, "We won't back down." And if that means it goes all the way up to the United States Supreme Court, so be it. It pushes through. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke, you're next, then Robert Patterson and Peggy Forsyth Andrews.
I apologize. I left my glasses in my car, so bear with me on this. And I'm an attorney as well, so I would even paralegal for the cause. My name is Brooke Chapel, and I am a lifelong resident of Old Town specifically. So, 45 years, seen it all change. When there was one high school, that was me. Right out of the gate, I wanna acknowledge that you guys are not in an easy or admirable position, so I completely recognize between a rock and a hard place, truly. So, I appreciate you being patient and listening, and the Planning Commission as well. They've been very receptive to all of the feedback and questions that we've had. You've heard from a lot of concerned people today, and you've heard the concerns, and I agree with all of them. I just wanna make it very clear, though, that this argument that is there is not just a "not in my backyard" argument. This isn't about not wanting affordable housing or things like that. Location, location, location. You're packing a lot into a very tight, compact place. It could be 67 units of puppies and unicorns, and I would still be against it because it's the wrong place to do that. Not to mention the emergency personnel, and we've gone through this with the Planning Commission, but the emergency personnel, the railroad traffic, it's on the path for so many different schools and daycares and things like that. The location fixation with this project does not pass the gut check. Like, I just can't figure out what's the end game. And my mind and my life experience says follow the money some way, but you said it the right way, Mayor. The audacity of them not to even show up is very telling. We're being made an example of, I think, with this project. I just did briefly scrape the surface of the research, like the gentleman, a couple of speakers before me, and the Attorney General has his eye on this very clearly with forcing this housing quota agenda and blanket policies that are forcing counties and cities to eat the crap sandwich and love it. And that's not okay, and enough is enough at some point. If they were acting in good faith, they would have entertained the offers for other locations. They would have entertained the offers of other incentive programs that you've offered, and they did not do that. And so, again, that doesn't pass the gut check. In the previous Planning Commission meeting last year, I was able to sit in on the presentation that they did. It's a great program. I'm not anti that population, the affordable housing ability. It's not about that. It is about the location. There's nothing more frustrating than, as a citizen, taxpayer, voter, feeling like your voice doesn't matter, your vote doesn't matter. And so, with all of that said, please don't go forward in this and make a decision out of fear to a potential adverse ruling. Please fight this. I am not for frivolous taxpayer wasting dollars, anything like that. Please fight this. It's not a fight. Let us be the example. Let us pave the way. This is an SB 35 issue. It's completely unconstitutional, government overreach on its face, and we support you.
Thank you. Robert Patterson, then Peggy, and after that is Michael Monosky.
Hello, my name is Robert Patterson. I am not a public speaker, so bear with me while I try to get through this. I live in Elk Grove. I'm an Old Town Elk Grove resident. I have a few children who walk up and down through Elk Grove, visiting places. I was gonna come today with a bunch of statistics, letting you know about the homeless community and sexual assaults and, you know, drug abuse and all that. But I think there's only really two statistics that are really important. Right now, 100% of the people that showed up here and talked through this microphone have said, "Fight. Fight for us and do not give up." So, that's statistic number one. Statistic number two is, I can almost guarantee 100% of the people here will vote you out if you do not fight for us today. That is it. Please go do that. Fight the good fight.
Thank you. Next up is Peggy Forsyth Andrews, then Michael Monosky, followed by William Myers.
Good evening. I don't know there's a whole lot left for me to say after all that. I came to say a couple of things. I do believe, first of all, that you do care. I would like you to know that. I do think you're in a very difficult position, but I would echo the sentiments to fight. Ever since we became a city, we have heard we are going to be a state-of-the-art city. We are going to be different from all the other cities. We are going to be innovative. We are gonna create an environment for our citizens that's gonna be different. That's what we're asking you to do. We're asking you to send this back to staff, to send this back to our attorneys, and to find a way to create a model that possibly could be used in other cities in this state to, when it comes to SB 35. You can, you can call that facility whatever you wanna call it, but it is a mental health facility. And there are no populations that deserve protection more than another. And the children of our community are going to be put at risk because you cannot guarantee what will happen. That isn't to say people shouldn't have a place to be. And I think everybody in this room would agree that there has to be a facility here in Elk Grove somewhere, but Old Town is not the place. I live in Old Town. I do business in Old Town. And I have to tell you, I'm starting to become a little confused. You put money into rehabilitating Old Town, but this is not, you didn't do this, and I understand that. You're here trying to deal with this situation. But you are putting a winter sanctuary program on the corner of Waterman Road. So, what you're creating is, or helping to create, is a homeless community at the end of Old Town. And I'm a little confused. How, I'm putting my child through college. There are people in Old Town that have been there for many years, like I have, that that's how we earn our living. So, I would just ask for the same consideration that we, as a population, deserve to be considered and deserve to be protected as much as any other population. So, please fight. Please come up with an innovative model, and let's maintain our community. Thank you.
Michael Monosky, then William Myers, followed by Kenny Blakeslee.
Good evening. It's curious that SB 35 sunsets in 2026, which then begs the question, what was the legislative intent if the legislature decided to put a law into effect for only a few years? I find three indictments against this council. Now, we had Mike Guttridge here. I thought Mike Guttridge was a cartoon character, actually, that Pat Hume bragged about, but there's a real Mike Guttridge. And Mike Guttridge built the home that I'm living in. But around the corner from my home on Emerald Park Drive are many high-density buildings. There's one large apartment complex, and there are multiple McEwen five-plexes and a lot of duplexes as well. And it's a wonderful neighborhood to live in. However, Elk Grove City Council has failed since, and this is a legacy of Mike Guttridge, so, you know, kudos to Mike Guttridge and what he did 50 years ago. But Elk Grove has failed to promote and create high-density mixed uses for retail housing and commercial, which eliminate car use independence and favor pedestrian safety. When I first moved here 30 years ago, I was able to ride my bicycle down Elk Grove Boulevard. I can still ride a bicycle, but I wouldn't dare do it now. The second indictment is that this council employs corporate attorneys whose business financial interests conflict with urban humane applications of building codes. They, not the people, should be held financially liable for such malpractice. And finally, the real reason why we're here. The city council and the state have a long record of failure to build a sufficient stock of affordable housing. My conclusion is that the Elk Grove City Council will pay a political toll for this, and its bevy of lawyers should pay for these legal penalties, not the people. Thank you.
William Myers, then Kenny Blakeslee and Lynn Wheat.
Thank you. In my 48 years in this community, this is one of the most divisive and difficult issues that's come up. And I kinda have sympathy with all sides, though. There are people I know well on all sides. But it raises some hard ones when you take it for what it has to be. I really don't like the kinds of dynamics that went on to now. Madam, I really share your disappointment on not showing up tonight to hear. So, I sympathize a lot of that. But we have tough choices. In a way, it's property versus people. That's oversizing it, of course. But I wanna talk about the people thing a second. For a number of years, there was a... For a number of years, there was a group of churches or religious organizations that went together in our community called Elk Grove Win that, on weekends, divided, tell us out to the churches and put them out, you know, then they were picked up at one place, then they came back in. For some years, I was the guy, on Sunday mornings, checked them back in. I knew virtually every person, the Elk Grove homeless that went through that program and came in on Sunday mornings. That group, it had all kinds of people, of course. Didn't look anything like what I've been hearing homeless people describe tonight. We need to get closer to the facts. Second fact about the people. When this program came up, I thought I'd, because the city council actually didn't do a very good job of explaining what this kind of an institution is, what is permanent supportive housing anyway, you know? So I went online, and I looked it up, and I found out something. They're all over the place, for one thing, in California. Secondly, they're not a problem. Why? Because they vet these people very carefully before they come in, and they're permanent residents. The typical stay is nine years. Elk Grove Apartments will not be a homeless community. It's a stable community. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Kenny Blakeslee, followed by Lynn Wheat, and then Robert Lilly.
Good evening. I'm Kenny Blakeslee. My family lives near Jack Hill Park on one side of the project, and our business and buildings are located on the opposite side of the proposed apartments. I'm speaking today as husband, father, and local business owner. My initial commentary will be on the Elk Grove Apartments themselves and the problem their business model poses for our local community. The problem, as I see it, with my very limited knowledge, admittedly, is that we have a small local government and a small amount of folks who work for the city.
I'm sorry, can you pause the clock? Can we get the chatter in the back so we can be respectful to the speaker? Go ahead.
So we have a small local city, a small staff that works for the city, fighting against the business enterprises fueled by dollars and motivated by dollars. Business enterprises are successful by providing services that delight their customers. The problem to me with Elk Grove Apartments is their customers are not the city of Elk Grove or the tenants that'll be there. They don't generate revenue or profits from those tenants or from our city. Their profits and their revenue are generated from the state and from the grants and everything else that goes into the programs and the SB 35 or whatever it's called, right? But they don't generate profits from our community or their tenants, which will pose the problem that there is no reason for them to become pillars of our community or to provide services that will really serve their tenants. So in the long run, when they're not driven by a need to serve the local citizens, what motivation will they have to provide stellar services or to become a pillar? None. So what will start with promises and rose-colored guarantees become a community liability over time? Things appear to be very late in the game, lawsuits already filed, decisions essentially already made. I suppose I only have myself to blame for not being more engaged early. However, what troubles me is how many of the dealings, conversations, posturing, et cetera, appear to be happening without utilizing all available resources, and in reference to that, I'll refer to Mr. Perry Leonard earlier, who offered himself up as a resource. At no point have I witnessed or can I find evidence of engaging local business community to seek counsel or solutions to the problem before us. History's proven, time and time again, the solutions to real-world problems come from the private sector, not the public sector, so I would ask why the city council hasn't sought help from local businesses, business leaders in exploring options. The Elk Grove Apartments and their parent company have dollars as both fuel to operate as well as impetus for creative problem solving. Despite any feel-good narrative about this project and helping the homeless problem, let's not be confused. The driving force behind this project is revenue and profit. I don't fault Accelerate Housing Group for that. That is why an organization exists, to generate profits for shareholders by solving problems, whether those problems are real or not. I do, however, have a problem with the city and its citizens being bullied by the state and by the developer without putting up a hell of a fight and without using all the resources at their disposal. By no means am I claiming to have all the answers, but I'm confident if we tap into all of our resources, all the resources at our disposal, we can come up with better solutions to this problem, being voiced very loudly by citizens rather than giving into strong-arm tactics. There have been many longtime citizens tonight who voiced their concerns over the legacy of Elk Grove. It's valid, but we also need to consider the next generation and the leaders that we're developing and how this could affect them.
Thank you. Lynn Wheat, Robert Lilly, and Susanna Nye.
Good evening. First, I want to begin with that Old Town SPA isn't the only one that's been changed. Again, all of Elk Grove is my big backyard. Over the years, I watched the Laguna Ridge SPA be decimated, and it went from the diamond to the cubic zircon. And I can give one example of that. When that plan originally came, the high-voltage lines were all supposed to be underground. Well, now you can drive the second half of it and see some wonderful old streetlights with high-voltage power lines. So to say that our council hasn't changed SPAs would not be true. It's been done. Second of all, as far as affordable housing goes, I've been a long advocate for putting it into all the neighborhoods, and unfortunately, nobody wants it in their neighborhood, so we've ended up clustering very large affordable housing projects, and I will call them that because they're 200 to 300-plus apartments all along Bruceville, and reduce the parking spaces, so they won't have anywhere to park either. So if Old Town people are feeling picked on, you're not. Our entire city has been picked on because nobody wants some of our residents in their backyard. Tonight, we recognized our Native American population, and guess what? Nobody wanted them in their backyard when we all came over here and we pushed them onto reservations and isolated them and created a mess for them. So let's do that the same to our population that isn't as unfortunate as us, and yes, they have mental health issues and they have drug issues. Let's put them somewhere where we can give them the necessary help that they need, or do you prefer them just wandering around on our streets, streets, excuse me, as I see one individual walking the streets every day? Is this humane? Are we that city that welcomes everyone? I leave you with this, and I want you really to think about it. Fear, the false evidence appearing real. It's when we feel threatened or undermined, when we don't know all the facts, but we make a lot of subjective evaluation. This is only 67 units, and you know what? All of you out there could live by the 300-unit projects, as some people are. So we need to look at our land use. I encourage you to go to the general plan update, because when we were working on that, we're going to stick it all down in the SEPA area, because there weren't any residents down there to complain about projects going in. So yes, council, you have a tough decision to make, but who do you represent? Part of our population or all of our population? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Robert Lilly, then Susanna Nye, and Alan Vito. Please.
Robert Lilly, I live on 9616 Kent Street. I've been a longtime civil engineer in this area. Over 35 years, I've been representing the public or representing developers. I have never seen a situation where a developer did not come to a meeting and the meeting was held, which is to say, if the developer didn't show, it was continued, just outright. I can understand not doing that because there's a lot of people here that need to talk, but the other things I have to say have been said. Thank you.
Thank you for your brevity. Susanna Nye, then Alan Vito and Susan Pope.
Good evening. My name is Susanna Nye. I've worked for the state of California. I'm retired, but for 30 years, I've worked in public health as a dietitian. I've worked in prisons. I've been in the inside of CCWF and up in Crescent City, you know, with the real bad guys. And what I've noticed is, when people are in crowded conditions, it's not really helpful for their psychological well-being. And while I understand how important it is to have a place for people, what's really important is have a home-like environment or not to exacerbate the institutional lifestyle. And so what I would say, on behalf of these homeless people or people that are potentially residents in this, I'm going to call it facility, you know, are there civil rights being, I mean, is that really fair to them to be housed 67 in a very small area? So as a potential consideration would be, what about the rights of the individuals that are being subjected to this environment? I am concerned, too, about their ability to get places, and how many of these rooms, if you will, are for people with disabilities? Because is that enough space for a person with disabilities? And where can they have their vehicle, or how do they get around? So I'm really concerned about the quality of their life as well. I live just a block over, so, you know, this affects me personally, and I feel that the idea of having, this is not a bad, but the size is too large, and I'm asking you to, if you have the ability, if this is approved, could you please be proactive to develop other areas, you know, with smaller, more home-like environments, so that they can have, not an institutional, it just makes their mental health worse? And we really do want to support people so that they can be, you know, contributing to society, but we know that psychological trauma really gets in the way of their rehabilitation. So bottom line is, we all need a home. We need a place, but we need a place that helps us to be happy and healed, and in the current situation, I think it will make it worse for them, and obviously, for the people in this room, you hear their voice. So good luck, and we're really looking for your support to see what else you can do, but if you can't make the change, then moving forward, what can you do?
Thank you. All right. Next up is Alan Vito, then Susan Pope and Kirsten Salters.
First off, I want to thank everyone for coming here tonight. My name's Alan Vito, and for those of you who don't know, I'm a local real estate agent, homeowner in Old Town, and more importantly, I operate Bob's Club with my family. Bob's Club's the oldest business located in the oldest commercial building in all of historic Elk Grove, and my family's been there for 33 years. I also want to thank the Elk Grove City Council and staff for being here tonight and their time, and I do not envy the position that any of you are in. With that being said, based on what I've heard tonight from the council and city staff, it seems like you've already made your decision. The applicant didn't even bother to show up because they know you're just going to roll over, that you've made the decision to back down to the applicants and to the state of California. Your hands are tied, so when the project is built and our homes, businesses, and livelihoods are shadows of their former selves, and children can no longer safely walk to school, who are we going to blame? Who can we hold accountable when one of these individuals lashes out at one of my staff or customers? Who is going to answer for the obvious crime that is taking place against the kind and decent people of Old Town Elk Grove? I know it seems easier to pass the blame up the chain. I personally have my staff usually, it's not me, it's my boss tactic, when dealing with aggravated customers, but when the dust settles, who are going to be the ones picking up the pieces? Please, don't put the citizens of Old Town in that position. Fight with every fiber of your being so we don't have to. And if you do vote to approve this project, please provide some answers to these questions. As crime and homelessness rises and cleanliness, safety, and overall quality of life falls as a direct correlation of this project and its proximity to schools and homes and businesses that sell addictive substances, who are we going to hold accountable? I really don't think it's going to be Rob Bonta and the state legislators. Thank you.
Next up, Susan Pope, then Kirsten Salters, followed by Brian Colson.
My name is Susan Pope, and I am a longtime resident of Elk Grove and a business owner. To the gentlemen on the statistics, a short statistic is that 30% of homeless people are mentally ill. 50% of them have reoccurring substance abuse. This is a personal issue for me. I have a brother-in-law who is bipolar schizophrenic and homeless, and I have an 81-year-old mother who lives directly behind the proposed project of where you all, according to the news, have already approved, behind the scenes. We've watched Bobby, my brother-in-law. When he's on a good baseline of medication, things are somewhat okay. That baseline doesn't stay there very often, and when he is not, he himself is slashing the tires of his roommate's car, and I personally am getting those phone calls at 2:00 in the morning and having to run over and advocate for my brother-in-law, knowing that what he did was wrong. My mom, who's going to advocate for her when all of the crime, it's going to happen. There is no question about it. It happens when you see, most of these centers, there is crime. Do we need to pull the statistics? Do we hold you responsible, to that gentleman that just spoke? Do we, the people, have a right to stand up and say, if you are afraid of the state of California suing you, Mr. Leonard, do we, the people, have a right to sue the city of Elk Grove? When there is hazard, when there is damage, when our property values are devalued, when my mother can't go to bed at night, who lives by herself because my father passed away, because she's afraid of what is going to be on the corner? Who's responsible? Is it your mom? Is it your mom? Is it your mom, Kevin? Is it your mom? Are you all responsible? Will you take that responsibility? Can you assure us, as we, the people, that we will be protected? We didn't vote you in to protect the state. We voted you in to protect us, we, the people. We believe in you. We are counting on you to do your job, and your job is not to be in the pocket of Mr. Bonta.
Next up is Kirsten Salters, then Brian Colson and Ken Chappell.
My name is Kirsten Salters, and I actually am the sister of Susan who just spoke, and I am the homeowner of the house that my mother is living in. I am 57 years old. I have owned that home for 37 years, more than 37 years. I've lived in Elk Grove a long time, when racks roast beef was about the only place to eat. I can honestly say that I have never really experienced a lot of fear living in the wonderful community of Elk Grove. I applaud the works of the Elk Grove Police Department, although I'm seeing changes I don't like. I have fear that I never had. I now deal with fear every day of what's going to happen with my 81-year-old mother, who this project at three stories will not only be able to view her front yard, but will be able to view her backyard. And I am with my sister. Are you all going to be responsible when something happens? Because it may not be my mother. It may be someone else's mother. I do not have children. When Ms. Leonard spoke, it touched my heart. I stood on Elk Grove Boulevard yesterday, and I watched parents drive by, and I stopped and talked to many of them that did not know even what was going on. You're building, you have a wonderful project of the library, which could be a beautiful facility. The reality is, those people are going to be hanging out at that library. The children of the city of Elk Grove will not be safe at our own library. They won't be safe. Why are we putting money into this when we already know where this is headed? The preschool that has been there, that is a beautiful preschool, that I watch people pull up and pick their children up, those parents should not be feeling fear as they walk in and pick their children up from preschool, much less should they have to be dealing with, do I change preschools out of this location? It is going to directly impact. I wouldn't want my kids hanging out at Starbucks. I'm a nervous wreck, thinking of my 81-year- I'm a nervous wreck thinking of my 81-year-old mother, much less if I had children. I can tell you right now, I have children that are not my biological children. I will not feel safe taking them to the City of Elk Grove Library. You all need to fight this. I am not against homelessness. I am, I am against, I, I am against it, I feel like people need to be helped, but the majority of the people that we're looking at in this facility, they don't want help. They don't want help. They don't want to be told what to do, they don't want to be told where to go. This will affect businesses. I was in one of the businesses, and I will not name it, but I was in Arrest-
Ma'am, you're, thank you. Brian Colson, Ken Chappell, and our final speaker is Enrique Silva.
Thank you all for coming. We really appreciate each other, and everybody did a great job. Thank you guys for being here and listening to us. My family's been on Elk Grove Boulevard for quite a long time. We know everybody. My family owned Elk Grove Ready Mix for 31 years. My dad fought cityhood four times, he won four times. We have put together everything that we could possibly do to save our city throughout the 50 years that I know of. I know everybody from one end of this town to the other, we built everything. We were putting in 3,000 yards of concrete a day for Gutridge, and KB, and Elliot, and everybody, all the permits. I have never seen anything like this in my entire life. You got to see, 31 years of business, 3,000 yards of concrete a day, built Rancho Osoco, and I have never, in my life, ever give up on anything. Elk Grove is always won, no matter what. We fight for what is right for our town, our historical buildings, our historical plan, our historical lives. This is what we do. We don't give up. And obviously, you, and you, and you can all see that we're here for a reason, and we're begging, we're literally crying. We don't know where to go. We have no idea of where we're going to be. Some of these people are going to lose everything they got. Not me. I got three houses built in 1920, 500 feet away from that building, that my family told me, Brian, hang on to that stuff, take care of it. Someday, you're going to give it to your grandkids and their grandkids, and everybody's going to have something in life. You know what I feel like now? I might as well just get it out, rent it to whoever, and let them do whatever they want, and believe you, I can do that. I can put anybody in those buildings, and they can do whatever they want. They don't even have to pay me rent. Okay? But that's not the point. The point is, is that we're all here for you to help us, and that's all we're asking. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, people, so much.
Next up is Ken Chappell, and our final speaker is Enrique Silva.
Good evening. My name is Ken Chappell, I'm a longtime resident of Elk Grove, moved here in the mid-'70s. Actually, the year that I moved here is the year that Elk Grove Florin and Elk Grove Boulevard changed the flashing red light to an actual three-color light. Seen a lot of changes, positive and negative. But over the last, I recently, for the last 24 years, I have spent working in the prison system, and I've recently retired. And I have to tell you, most of that time I worked in the Enhanced Outpatient Program, or the Mental Health, at Mule Creek State Prison up Twin Cities Road. Most of these mental health inmates have been homeless prior to them committing a crime, which put them in the prison because there was no state hospital to put them in anymore. That being said, I've worked with these people who are two different people. They're one person when they're on their medication, and they're one person when they're off. Most of them don't want to be on their medication, so they cheat their medication and then get rid of it as soon as they're not being watched. This is an important thing to say because this affordable housing unit is actually a mental health program. And if you read into this program, they're not, I don't believe we have 67 people that qualify for this in Elk Grove. So where will they come from? From Sac County, from maybe out of the county? I don't know. But where will they go when they decide they don't want to stay in Oak Rose anymore? They'll just go down the street because they don't have a car? Well, if they had a car, they wouldn't be able to park it there because there's only six parking places. So, you know, I, I really want you to look into this program because it is a project. It's not an affordable housing uni, apartment. And the project means we are developing the projects, and we're going to have to start dealing with problems of big cities that have the projects, okay? We don't need a mental health program in middle of downtown Old Town. I feel for you, sir. You and your staff are going to have your hands full. You already do, but it's going to get worse. I, I, I don't know what to say. I see the homeless problem in Elk Grove. There was a homeless person right outside of the Brick House Saturday night when I was at Brick House supporting that business and having dinner with my wife. There's homeless people on the bike trail that I, you know, right around the corner where I live, because I live within walking distance of Oak Rose. I, I really think this is the wrong, this is maybe a right thing to do as far as Oak Rose, it's in the wrong location. I, I, I appreciate the city offering the two acres of Elk Grove Florin near Calvine in trade for this, and I also, I think that would have been smart for the developer. They could have put a bigger facility, there's more property, but they turned that down. I really think this project is wrong.
Thank you, sir. Enrique Silva? Enrique, are you here? Might be out in the hallway.
Enrique? Enrique Silva?
No?
I don't know if he's placed.
No. All right, with that, I, does anyone see Enrique heading here? No? Okay.
Rambo.
All right, well, with that, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity, and since the applicant is not here to provide any closing comments, which is unfortunate, we will go ahead and declare that the public hearing is now closed and open it up for council comments. So I'll start to my left with council member Sue.
Mayor, I'd actually defer to the district this, this project is in to be traditional.
Yeah, we'll start with council member Brewer, and then I'll work down this way and then come back this way.
Let's have a conversation, people. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. All of your emails, all of your phone calls, all of our conversations, not just over the last few weeks, but for the entire, like, year and change since I wrote about this very issue. And for some of you that read it, you know where I stand on this issue. But I want to share some information with you because for us as a city, as you know, facts, evidence, data, science, this is what we do all of our decision-making upon. I listened to a press conference yesterday, and the Attorney General said that that's what he follows when he adopts policies. He says he's committed to safety, he says he's committed to action. If that's the case, why is he affecting our quality of life? Why is he affecting our quality of life? Why is he affecting our ability to develop the historic district into a nice district that everyone can enjoy? Where we're building our economy and making it stronger, maintaining our old values as we build the historic district. Well, I also want to share another piece with you. We have a couple of bills that are pending on the governor's desk, so even as this issue, even as this issue continues, there's a couple of bills that will slam the door shut on SB 35, will extend the ministerial review pro, progress, process, and make it even more difficult for local governments to control our fate, to develop our communities, to work together, to build what we are continuing to build here in Elk Grove, SB 423 and SB 309. According to League of California Cities, SB 423 is the latest overreaching bill. It's a, it's a, a cleanup to SB 35, which was adopted in 2017. This measure would double down on the recent trend of the state overriding its own mandated local housing plans by forcing cities to approve certain projects without regard to the needs of the community, opportunities for environmental review, or public input. While it may be frustrating for some developers to address neighborhood concerns about traffic, parking, and other developmental impacts, those directly affected by such projects have a right to be heard. But public engagement also leads to better projects, but not having such outlets will increase public distrust in government and result in additional ballot measures limiting housing development. Instead of continuing to pursue top-down, one-size-fits-all legislation, legislators should partner with local officials. That's SB 423. There's another bill, AB 309, not related, but kind of related, because this would create the California Housing Authority with a mission to produce and acquire social housing developments for the purpose of eliminating the gap between housing production and regional housing needs assessment targets, and to preserve affordable housing. Additionally, as a state entity, the California Housing Authority would have full control over properties they own and would not be required to abide by local zoning, design standards, density requirements, height limitations, parking requirements, or other development So that's just a sample of what we as a, as a community are, will be experiencing as other bills, including one that would address ministerial review and requires more environmental review to address the shortcomings of SB 35 and its shortcomings. But one of the more important things is that, one of the things that has been ignored is that Elk Grove is meeting the, the demand on low-income housing. We have several apartment complexes on the way, some that, that have more rooms, that require just as much, just as much service to more people. In addition to these new laws that are coming that will amend state law on permanent supportive housing, they will tighten up any other perceived loopholes on SB 35 enactment, like I said earlier. And as over these, over this past year, we've offered suggestions, but they have been denied. And so as we continue to look at this issue, we still want to trust local governments to make sound decisions, but, and as we do that, we can control our own fate, develop our communities, and put people in a position to win. That was the purpose of the, of the property that, and the properties, two properties, that we had offered to the developer, giving them a chance to win, to help these individuals get on a track to win. Putting them in, in, in Old Town, in the historic district, definitely puts a crippling effect. And I love how everyone said that we need to fight because, truth be told, the, I mean, one of the people, one of the folks that mentioned tonight is right, our job is to protect the city. And part of the fiscal aspect that we look at this is as we continue to fight, we're offering these guys more money to take from us out of our general fund, which is your money. And we're looking at millions of dollars. This could affect services that we provide for you going into the future. So it's, so, let me finish, because I, because, because I know exactly what you're talking about, because I've been here since 1997. I've been living up here since 1987 in the Sacramento area, but Elk Grove since 1997. I've traveled the roads, I've been to the stores, I've, even though you guys may not have noticed because I probably wear a hat and do my secret squirrel thing, I'm with you every step of the way. One of the things that we, but, well, one of the things we, we need to do as we think about this is that for the arrogance and the gall for Oak Rose Apartments LP developers to not be here tonight, we should all be very offended by that because obviously, they think they know something that we don't know. And we need to basically say, you guys are wrong. But the way to do that is looking at other, other solutions, keeping the door open, but if they are going to basically give us the stiff arm and not pay attention to us, and if they know, if they think they have backup with the state within the Attorney General and the governor, then what, then what does that say for, for that leadership? And what does that say for the people who supported these bills when they know that, according to the League of California Cities, which represents all the cities in the region, all the cities in the state, and your voice as well, when they're, when these two bills are being opposed for these reasons that were mentioned in this letter, that tells us that they are, that they're the ones that are out of pocket, and they don't have the right lens looking at this because they're not in it for the humanistic reasons, they're in it for the money. So with that said, I want to hear from the rest of our colleagues because I know we all feel very strongly about this issue, but I love seeing this crowd tonight, and I love seeing you guys here because this is the spirit of community right here.
Thank, all right, next, council member Robles? No, I'm sorry, public comment is over. Thank you, though. Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Brewer. It's been a year. My hair has gotten a little bit grayer, and thank God it's not receding yet, so that's a good thing. But when I first started this project, it was, it came before the Planning Commission. I was one of the Planning Commissioners who voted against it, and it was based on the design review. I am pretty upset that the developers aren't here. I think it's vitally important for them to be a part of this process, and even for them to be present. I'm also upset the fact that this whole conversation has been geared towards homelessness, and in a sense, making it, how should I say this, deeming them wrong for being homelessness, for being homeless. And I understand that that's not it, and I understand that we've done different. So again, I've heard this project before and came before in the Planning Commission. I wish HOPE Cooperative was here. Do we know if they're present by any chance?
Not HOPE.
No? So HOPE Cooperative, it would be the program that would be actually the people who would be enforcing all of this, and I kind of just wanted to hear a little bit of what they're doing as well, or wanted to hear since the public comment is closed. But in a sense, it's making sure that, you know, we have a tough decision to make, and the truth is, I mean, it's, again, we're dealing with several different aspects, and for me, it's also making sure that our city is in a physical responsibility as far as for the general, the general fund and how much money comes in. But some of the comments that I did here are concerning, and the reality is that even some of the stuff that was brought up with the conditions of approval, prevailing wage that was brought up, and I definitely agree with that, sir, forgive me, I forgot your name, but I agree that that should have been one of the things that they should be if the private, project was approved, that that should be one of the things that should be implemented. It's, again, very disheartening that we're going through this aspect, and I'm upset at the state too. I'm upset at the AG because they're pretty much making sure that we have to pass this, right? And the bills that are on the governor's desk, if signed a law, will pretty much require us to pass this.
Oh, you're not. No. And-
Order in the chambers, please, let's, please, a lot, everybody had an opportunity to speak.
So, again, for me, it's making sure that we weigh a lot of what's going on, and I do have a couple of questions as far as, I know we can't talk about the litigation numbers, but is there any, like, projected figures that we would see that this could possibly lead if we chose to continue this?
Yeah, they're 10, 12, 15, 16.
This is a question for our city attorney, thank you, though.
So if the litigation goes forward all the, all the way through trial at the trial court, not considering any appeals, it's, it's probably mid to high six figures is going to be the cost that the city would incur, and that would be incurred whether the city wins or loses. If the city loses, then the city would likely be obligated to pay the attorney's fees to the other side as well, so you can double, if not triple, that amount. so you can double, if not triple, that amount, maybe more.
Do we, do we know what the, because there are some cities that are exempt from this? Do we know what cities are exempt from this? From the SB 35?
There's a handful of communities that have met their Reno requirements. Like, I think it was like less than eight percent or something.
We have the eight percent number, but we don't have the exact municipalities that are in compliance with Reno.
There, there are none in the Sacramento area.
None in Sacramento, okay. I guess, I mean, these are just some of my questions, and I would like to hear what other council colleagues would like to say.
I'll go to my left now, Councilmember Suen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll start also by thanking everybody for coming out tonight. Obviously, you know, we feel it. We feel the, you know, not just fear, but the concern, the uncertainty of what would lie ahead if, you know, if this project went forward. We, we, you know, some of you, we talked with last year, over a year ago, when we, when we turned down this project then. And, you know, we have been fighting for you ever since. You haven't seen it, but it's been going on. We, we've worked to purchase additional properties. We've reached out multiple times to the builder, to the Attorney General, all of, to receive, you know, nothing back, you know, silence and lack of response. But continual, you know, tightening of the noose, if you will, demonstrated by their, by their continued progression in, in their litigation against us. And that's pretty frustrating, you know, with that. I think Mr. Becker or others mentioned, you know. I'm used to, I've always said to people, you know, "I'll talk to you about anything. I may not always agree with you, but we'll have a conversation." And that's, that's pretty frustrating for me. There is an opportunity, absolutely, for a win-win on this. A win-win. And I would dare say that, you know, the builders would actually make out better if, you know, if they would have just come to the table. SB 35 definitely needs revision. The implementation of this law, while, you know, well-intended to address affordable housing and the housing crisis, is implemented horribly. And there's, there's a lot, I think, that can be discussed. And I think there's, there's room in, and I'm hopeful that one day common sense will prevail and that SB 35 will be revised. You know, the look at, when you talk about the risk, and I heard people say, "Hey, we've got, let's just keep fighting." And, and, you know, hearing about that, you know, "We're comfortable to pay." You know, and I wish this was a dialogue, but, you know, how, how high does that go? I mean, we, I, we talked about just from the project perspective, but, but we haven't talked about the risk of, of losing our land use authority, the risk of not being able to have grants for transportation projects, for other things to do in our city. Someone talked about traffic. You could, my turn, please, my turn. Look, and I'm happy to, I've done a lot of research on this, whether it's the housing issue, homeless issue. I've visited permanent supportive housing facilities. I'm happy to, you know, meet with any, with a conversation about all of that. So I'm just trying to, I mean, as much as I can, I'm trying to be, be concise, but still give you, give you a little bit of background of the, of the full, you know, the full scope of things here. So there, my point to you is, there is greater risk than just this project. There's, there is, there's greater risk. And not just from a dollar's perspective, but, again, being able to do the things for the other 170-plus thousand people, you know, near 180,000 people in our city that we're trying to, we're trying to represent as well.
Let's please hear from counsel.
And, you know, so, so that's, that's the greater risk. I just wanted you to be aware. It's, there's, there's more risk than just, just this project. Then you have, what I wrestle with is, if we're going to have things like SB 35, why even plan? You know, we've, we have this regional housing needs assessment process for housing elements, a state-mandated process that says, "Hey, you need to show the state that you're setting aside enough, enough land to support affordable housing." But then someone is allowed to come in, and during that process, during that plan, you identify properties within the city, which was its own challenge for us when we went through this process. You have to identify those, those properties. And then to have someone come in and just go anywhere and not have to, not have to talk to us at all, they're not, they didn't, they didn't go on a, one, any of the properties that are actually in our plan that was approved by the state in the first place. So then I ask again, why, why even plan? Why do a general plan? Why do, you know, why have this, have this housing element process? If anybody can just come in and willy-nilly, just, you know, decide they're going to do something anywhere and then not even have to talk to the, to the city at all? So that, you know, that's frustrating to me. And, and then, you know, what you don't know is, you know, we talked about the applicant, you know, not being here tonight. And they, you know, they sent us a letter, and it's public information, they sent us a letter. They really don't want us to approve this project. So they're actually in alignment with everybody in this audience here. They don't want us to approve this project. In fact, they're opposing some, they're opposing a lot of, a lot of standard conditions that we would normally impose on, on a project, you know? Even things like sewer and water, some basic, you know, basic stuff. Why? Because they have, they have their own motives behind that. But they really don't want us to approve it. So, that just, that just reemphasizes the, you know, coming back to my original commerce, the original discussion tonight, which, or when I started, which was, "Talk to us," you know? We, we want to, we want to work with you, you know? We, we, anybody that comes to us, we try to work with people, and, you know, we, I, Elk Grove is a very compassionate community, pragmatic, business-friendly. We try to do what's right at every turn. And, you know, we don't, I've taken hard votes in here, you know? We, we've approved things that people weren't, weren't happy, but it was, it was the right thing to do, because, you know, not just of what, of what, what the project was about, but because the people worked with us. They, they sat down and, you know, to the best of our ability, we, we hashed things out. And would, it just, you know, I know the risk and everything, but this just really, it just really pisses me off. This, the attitude of, of this applicant, you know, I mean...
Please, let's hear from Councilmember Suen.
You've all had an opportunity to speak. Please be respectful to our speakers as well, please.
There will be, there, you know, look, I, I know there, there will be, there's, there's cost, there's cost to this. But, there is. No, don't, hey, please. Please.
Order, order, please. Please, you showed tremendous respect in the beginning. Please continue. Thank you.
There...
We're frustrated, but please, let's hear what everyone has to say, without interruption, please.
There, excuse me, excuse me, it's my turn, please.
It's our turn to speak, please let us speak.
People need to be aware, I mean, there, there is cost to this. And, but, you know, at this point in time, I, I mean, I want to fight a little more, so I'm, I can't support this. I can't do it. The implementation of this is, you know, it's just wrong. But I, I...
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. All right. About two hours ago, someone asked, you know, "We want you to know, or we want you to feel how we feel," something to that effect. And so, normally, I don't discuss my background, my history, because most people really don't care. But I'm the kind of guy that's not going to pee on your leg and tell you it's raining, okay? Because I grew up here. My family moved here in 1976. We lived on La Riviera Road before. If you're familiar with what was going on along La Riviera Road, the Golden State Killer had struck on Salmon Falls, not far from where we lived. And my father made the decision that we were going to move to Elk Grove to be safer. Moved to the corner of Sheldon and Bradshaw. Every single Saturday and every day during the summer, I would ride my bike down Sheldon Road, down Waterman Road, and then into Old Town Elk Grove. That's my playground. There was a bike shop there, there was a record store there, there was, I buy my corduroy jeans there, if everybody remembers 1976, bell bottoms even. Okay, so that was 1976. I understand. I get it. I know, I mean, I've, I've lived, except for the time that I was in the military, I've lived here in Elk Grove. I don't live in Old Town, and I don't live in, in the rural area anymore. But I've lived here. This has been my home since 1976. So important points here, and I, and I'll go, go over these a lot faster than what you had before, because a lot of you have, not you, I wasn't referring to you. I'm talking about, I'm talking about their comments. I'm talking about their comments. Has anybody seen the commercial about shingles? You know, where they say, "I travel for, or I ride my bike for, you know, five hours a day," and then they say,
Shingles doesn't care.
Well, I want you to remember that as I go through this part here. It's underparked, and cars will overflow onto Elk Grove Boulevard. That's a complaint that I've heard. You want to help me out here, Councilman Suen? Senate Bill 35 doesn't care. Right?
Yeah.
It's immediately across the street from a childcare center. Senate Bill 35 doesn't care. It's in close proximity to bars. Senate Bill 35 doesn't care. It'll impact traffic. Senate Bill 35 doesn't care. It'll be right next to the library with children. Senate Bill 35 doesn't care. It's along a path where children walk to school. Senate Bill 35 doesn't care. Property is too, the property is too small. Senate Bill 35 doesn't care. Next to a historical building, everybody say it with me. Senate Bill 35 doesn't care. Okay. Crowded conditions, Senate Bill 35 doesn't care.
You can chime in here.
Yeah, this one, yeah, I mean, I'll give you permission to do this. Okay. The city of Elk Grove has offered two alternate locations and millions of dollars in incentives. And let me be clear about that. That's seven, seven zeros. Excuse me, six, six zeros, right? Seven digits, six, six zeros, okay? We have offered them that. And in both instances, we had to push, pull, cajole, and try to get a response out of them. They didn't even respond to the last one. Am I correct on that legal? They, they did not respond to the second.
No formal response.
Okay, thank you. So as evidenced by the refusal of both the alternate locations and the incentives, the developer doesn't care. I believe, as the rest of the 2022 City Council did, not all of us were on that 2022 council. Three of us were. I'm sorry? We were on the Planning Commission, of course, but I didn't want to speak for everybody. I only want, here's the important point, folks. I'm speaking for me. Because I'm not, and I don't believe anybody else here is, but I'm, I'm accepting the responsibility for what I've done, what I've said, and what I believe, just as I believe that everybody else here is, okay? But that 2022 City Council, of which I was one, that the developer's project did not meet objective standards and is not entitled to the Senate Bill 35 process, as evidenced by the legal actions and statements by the state of California leadership, they don't care. And they've doubled down further by adding legislation that locks out your ability to have even this ministerial, this ministerial process. They voted for that, folks. They're proud of it. Moving forward, what can we do? Well, what we're going to have to do, I think, at the end of the day, is we're going to have to rely upon our public safety, as we always have, to make sure that we mitigate the problems that will come from this. And yes, there absolutely will be problems from this. It's underparked. There's going to be, there's going to be cars parked out on Elk Grove Boulevard. There will be addition to congestion. It will happen. Mr. Vito and Mrs., Ms. Pope, who's going to be responsible? Well, I'll tell you this, the people who are responsible are the ones at the state. But here's what's, here's what's going to happen in actuality. We're going to be responsible for it. Because we're the ones, because here's my bet, here's my bet, please, sir. Here's my bet, and I hope that I'm wrong. My bet is, however this goes, one way or the other, the last time that any of you are going to complain about it is to us. Because what I hope that you do is to take your concerns and take it directly to the legislators who are passing this crap. Right? So, we're, we're talking, at this point, I had, I had, I, what I felt I was going to do. But what I'm sensing is that there's, there's another option here. But, yep. I hope that you can all see that we've tried, to this point, we have tried our best to do the right thing for the city. But I want to caution you on something. You really need to understand this point. There are three other districts in this city, and they may very well turn to us and, and say, "Are you being fiscally responsible with our money?" Right? There, we have 178,000 people in the city of Elk Grove. We have, I'm going to guess, maybe 300 people tonight, tops, right? There are, excuse me, folks, hang on, hang on. Because I told you, I am not going to lie to you. I'm going to give you the unvarnished truth. What I'm telling you is that there are 170, or let's, let's reduce it to 177,500 people who are going to be asking the question, "Did you do the fiscally responsible thing?" All right? And so we have to answer, not just to you, but we have to answer to them, too. All right? Now, what I, what I hear is some reluctance to make a decision tonight. And so what I'm asking, perhaps, I, I really don't want to go through all the, the public comment again, but if, if there is a, if there is, hey, folks, I'm serious, folks. I, I know how you feel. I swear, I get it. I can't tell you how many nights I was in, laying in bed angry because I felt powerless, powerless to change any of this. Because this is not what I want for you. This is not what anybody wants for you. And I have, I have, I have lost sleep. I've had, I've had a number of conversations with folks because I want what's best for you. I don't think this is the best. Again, I have other concerns I have to put in as well as fiscally responsible for the entire city. So, I, there may be some, what do you call it, some desire to continue this.
Let me give my comments.
Okay, but I put that on the table if it would like to be continued for one, for one last try, but...
First of all, I want to thank all of you for coming. I know that this is not easy to come to these meetings. I hear you. I feel, I feel your pain. The city has attempted to negotiate a resolution of this lawsuit with the project applicant, who's a no-show this evening. who's a no-show this evening, and the state by proposing alternative sites with possible incentives that would have resulted in the city taking ownership of the project site, which we could have easily used for the library. This expansion of our forthcoming library, that is something that we actually have a desire to see, a civic amenity that would have benefited everyone. But despite the city's best efforts, an agreement was not reached. And let me be clear, Elk Grove maintains its commitment to providing housing for all. The City Council has approved other projects that include permanent supportive housing units and continues to fund and operate a range of options designed to prevent, respond to, and, and homelessness. I have reached out personally to the developer several times to help find a win-win situation that would allow for more units. Yes, more units, better parking, a better location in a high priority area with great amenities. Nothing. Here we are today with the developer and the state being heavy-handed. And let's also be clear, the sixty-seven units are not going to make a dent in the housing crisis and homelessness. We had an opportunity, and I believe we still have an opportunity, to do more, build more, but so far, this has been rejected. The state needs to be a better partner rather than sue cities. Have conversations. Come and visit and see these locations rather than what they are doing, which is doubling down. It's cities like our great city of Elk Grove that contributes to making California the golden state. Elk Grove is doing our share to contribute to California being the fifth largest economy. We should be partners. Our high quality of life, our great schools, our neighborhoods, our public safety, and more, are the many reasons we have such great pride in our city. I am disappointed in our state officials who continue, who continue to pass laws that strip local control on our land use decisions. You know who knows our community best? We do. We know our community best. Recently, the legislature passed Senate Bill 423, which further restricts local control. Elk Grove opposed this. The California League of Cities was the leader in opposing this. And I am so angry and disappointed that our state officials, all of them, seem to easily forget their own local roots, from our governor to our legislature, who all are either former mayors and city council members, who know the value of local control, who continue to pass these laws, strengthening their own power grab. We were hoping to find a win-win, but the developer and the state have tied our hands. To the residents here today, you all should be angry. I am angry too. I am angry. When you have an opportunity to build more units on a better location, why wouldn't the state and the developer want to work with the city? I can't help but believe this is no longer about affordable housing. This smells like politics. But you know, a lot I share with my colleagues, some of the concerns, we're considering, you know, the, the applicable law, the Senate Bill 35, the current allegations in both of these lawsuits, the uncertainties, the risks and cost of litigation. We've explored options for alternative locations with the applicant and the state without success. This is why we're here this evening, really being forced to reconsider this project, because the negotiations went nowhere. They've doubled down. Great questions. But Elk, please, it's my turn. Thank you. Elk Grove will continue to be a great city to live, work, shop, and play. This issue will not define who we are. I'm still speaking. We will continue to create more affordable housing opportunities, not because we are being forced to, but because it's the right thing to do. We have and will continue to provide affordable housing options throughout the city and in neighborhoods and integrate them into our community, because we are a community that is compassionate. As a reminder, more than one thousand one hundred new affordable housing units, including permanent supportive housing units, are currently in some form of development in Elk Grove. In February, the city joined developers for the groundbreaking of Poppy Grove Apartments, a three hundred and eighty-seven unit affordable housing project. Since January 2021, the city of Elk Grove has committed more than thirteen point four million dollars to loans for affordable housing projects. And a few months ago, the city issued a request for proposals for the development of seven point five acres over two sites for additional affordable housing units. And we will commit nine million dollars in local funding towards these projects. What, what I can control as mayor and as our city is to ensure that our neighborhoods are safe. We can enhance public safety and patrols. We will continue to invest in our historical district because we love our historical district. We don't love what the state and the developer is doing to our great city. We will continue to build a world-class library. I'm still speaking, but thank you for, but I implore the developer and the state to work with us. If we have a common goal for affordable housing, let's sit down. Don't avoid us. Sit down and have a conversation. If this is a, I'm speaking, ma'am. Please, order, order in the chamber, please.
Ma'am, please.
We want the developer and the state to work with us. We want to have these conversations. We have tried, we have tried many times. But I like to think that maybe this conversation is not over. We have a common goal. I'm hearing some of the comments. I don't want to go through this again. This was very tough. I don't want you to all to have to come here again for three hours of testimony. However, however, I'm speaking, please. Thank you. I do not appreciate the state and the developer of the, the hands that they're, you know, what they're forcing us to do. But if there's an opportunity, I'm willing to have a conversation, um, to see if there's one last opportunity to perhaps come to an agreement.
Madam, Madam Mayor. Excuse me, folks.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Folks, please, please, we're not done. Please allow us. We've listened to you. We've been very patient. I know you each only got three minutes. I understand that, but we've listened, we understand, we're working it out. Please give us that chance. Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think the one thing that I think we have some pretty violent agreement amongst the five of us, that we are, we are very incensed by the developer's, uh, lack of presence here today.
Yes.
What I would like to do, while I would not like to have to have everybody come back again, what I would like to do is to write a golden engraved invitation, because apparently they needed an invitation. Perhaps we could write them a golden engraved invitation to please be present if we continue this item. I, I would like to make a decision tonight, but I'll tell you what, I have a really difficult time doing it without-
Without them here.
So.
And I will continue to stand, you know, and to close my comments, the goal of what this project, the mission, of course, we all support having affordable housing. We need to do that. But I continue to say that that location is terrible. It is a terrible loca- location for so many reasons. It is a terrible location, and that is why we have done our due diligence. We are negotiating in good faith, in good faith, to try to find the win-win situation where you can have more units on a better site that has parking. And let us use that site as part of our library. So if I see a motion to have a continuation for this.
Ma- Mayor, members of the council-
Yes, sir.
If I can offer a couple of suggestions, if you want to continue it, that, that's fine. That's certainly the council's prerogative, and I will reach out to the representative for Oak Grove and the State Attorney General's office as well if there's some-
I would expect they're, hopefully, they're watching right now, so they hear the golden engraved invitation.
Regardless, I'll reach out to both.
Well, thank you. I hope you have gold lettering, sir.
We would like to have a good faith discussion, a negotiation, before we just agendize. If we can get to a win-win, which is the right thing to do for everyone, get to that win-win.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
One of the things I would, one of the things I would suggest the council do if you do want to continue it, so that it doesn't need to be re-notice, is continue it tonight to a date certain. The next council meeting would be October 11th. Uh, the briefing, the litigation is going to start next month, mid-October. I think it's twenty-fourth is the first brief that is due. So there are some time crunches that we're sensitive to. So if you want to continue it until October 11th, that would be the next available date. If you want more time, that's fine, but it could have some impacts on where the litigation goes and where any kind of settlement discussions go.
So I would hope that October 11th would be enough time for them to get up from Southern California?
It's two weeks from now.
Yeah, I think they can-
Yeah. Could drive it.
Madam Mayor, Ma- uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, if any of these conversations do happen, as, as they, as we call them continuances, as the member of the affected district, I want to be at the table. No questions asked, because, because at the end of the day, we are going to feel the brunt of the benefit or the kick in the ass. So I need to be at the table as part of those discussions to make sure that they're going to be in good faith, because we all play poker, and we know when people are playing us or if people are playing the game. So we need to, we need to do that.
I think that was a second then?
Was that a second?
That's a second.
So to be clear, there's a motion and a second to continue it to October 11th. Do I understand that correct?
Correct. Yes, I think, I think it needs to be done by then.
Yeah, absolutely.
There will be a decision October 11th. There must be. My opinion.
All right. We have a motion and a second, so all those in favor of continuing this item, please say aye.
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 All right.
Madam Mayor, I'm respectful, requesting real and public comment. The reason being is that public comment is not a dialogue. You have requested a dialogue here many times, to have people here who are willing to respond to what you folks have said. They haven't had that opportunity over the years to what you have said. I have questions, especially of Mr. Brewer and those of you that are sitting there specifically-
Okay, sir. Unfortunately, we have additional business to conduct the rest of the evening, but please reach out, and if whatever questions you have, please direct them, um, and anybody else for that matter, um, willing to have conversations and meet, and meet people and so forth. So just reach out.
It should be a public dialogue, more than just be present.
Okay. Thank you.
You have the public-
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. Huh? Okay, um, we do have other agenda items this evening. All right, we'll take a, maybe a three-minute comfort break? As we clear out the room. Councilmember Robles, please return to the dais. All right, if we can get, um, everyone, please, we're going to continue our meeting.
Folks, please-
Everyone, we need everyone to take a seat so we can continue our business.
I think this is the last item of the night, so we won't have to do it ten o'clock, right?
All right, our next item, item nine point one.
And that's to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a consultant contract with the Gathering Inn to operate the enhanced winter sanctuary for the 2023-24 winter season.
Housing and Public Services Manager. I'm here tonight to share some information with you on the enhanced winter sanctuary. Um, I'll start with a little bit of background on the previous, uh, sheltering efforts that have taken place in Elk Grove. Um, starting in 2013, Elk Grove Heart, a local nonprofit, ran their winter sanctuary program that they called EG Winds. In that program, they served up to twenty to twenty-five adults, depending on the year, per night, over a twelve to fourteen week period each winter. They ran their program from the Elk Grove United Methodist Church. So folks came to the United Methodist Church, and they checked in there, and they were ultimately transported to one of the participating churches. Um, churches took a week at a time, and then the morning, they were returned back to the United Methodist Church. Unfortunately, after COVID, uh, or during the COVID year, Elk Grove Heart did not return to doing the, the winter sanctuary. It was always a big effort to put together with the churches, um, and volunteers, um, and post-COVID, um, people were less willing to, to do that volunteer work and offer up their churches. So, um, the subsequent year, Heart helped us, uh, with the overnight warming locations. That was an expanded effort that wasn't quite the whole season, um, but did rely on, on churches and volunteers as partners too. That also proved pretty difficult, um, and so last year, we only had warming centers in compliance with the CALOE S standards. That meant that a lot of the times that it was raining, but not super cold, warming centers were not open, and there was no consistent place for people who were unhoused to go for shelter. So currently, at any given time, we have about a hundred to a hundred and fifty homeless individuals in our city. And we know that they, that addressing homelessness is a huge priority for our community. Measure E, it was one of the top concerns that residents noted. Um, it was our best-attended Measure E workshop, uh, and the folks who attended that workshop, residents, um, as, as well as many community organizations and stakeholders, um, really noted that shelter was a high priority for the city, especially during the winter months, when being homeless is the most difficult, really, because it's, it's cold, it's rainy, it's windy, um, and there's no place to go at night. We are seeing folks dying in other communities. We've been fortunate not to see that happening in our community, um, but there is the real risk of that. There is also the, uh, the fact that lacking shelter options really inhibits our police department from citing people for camping on, uh, or trespassing on public property. And so offering a shelter option offers a compassionate approach that allows law enforcement to have a place, um, to encourage people to go. So, um, this year, we worked to put together some guidelines for- So this year, we worked to put together some guidelines for what we are calling the Enhanced Winter Sanctuary. We are expecting that it will serve 30 adults per night, the first priority being folks who are already in our community, living outdoors, living in cars. Our homeless services navigator has been compiling a list, along with our homeless outreach team, of folks that we want to encourage to take this, this option. We have a pretty good number of people, including folks who have been longtime homeless in Elk Grove. And then if there are any available beds after that, and there may not be, our second priority would be people who are employed in Elk Grove. And we, we do actually, I know a lot of people would not expect this, but we do actually have a lot of employed people who are experiencing homelessness in our city. Many of them do shift work, work late shifts, a lot of them work at the Apple facility. So we would be looking at serving those folks, and folks that had their last permanent address in Elk Grove, or who receive social services through an Elk Grove agency like the food bank. The shelter that we're proposing would be open from November 1st to March 31st, so the five coldest months, and it would offer a consistent place to stay. So once folks were accepted into the shelter, they would have a bed designated for them until they either chose to leave for housing or other reasons, or until their behavior did not meet the standards of the shelter. The shelter would operate 24 hours a day. That does accommodate shift workers, and we see it really as reducing the impact on the neighborhood. People are leaving at a different time each day, people are coming back at a different time, and coming and going as needed. There would be a curfew for the nighttime hours, but it, it means not everybody's going in at 6:00, not everybody's exiting at 6:00 a.m., so you have a much more staggered approach there. It also really allows for more intensive services to be provided at the shelter, because folks are there during the day. And I'll, I'll cover this, and our service provider, proposed service provider will as well, but there, we have a really robust services plan that will build resources and connections for folks. We are also looking at a low-barrier shelter. So one of the challenges that we have in getting people to accept shelter is that many shelters don't accept pets, and they don't have a place for people to store their belongings. And those are two things that people are unwilling to part with. And so this year, we expect that the shelter would allow pets, one per person, and you can't acquire a new one while you're, if you go in without a pet, you can't get one while you're being sheltered. But if you have a pet going in, you are allowed to, to have that pet. And also provide a place to store possessions, so your bike, you know, a reasonable amount of personal possessions, clothing, and personal effects. As I mentioned, we are looking at a referral-only shelter. So the referrals would come from the city's homeless services navigator, who works closely with our police homeless outreach team, or another community outreach worker. And there's a vetting process for participants to make sure that they meet those residency requirements, that they have some basic background check, that they've agreed to follow the rules of the shelter, and so forth. So once accepted into the shelter, there are a lot of services that are provided onsite there. Case management for each individual, mental health services, substance use disorder counseling for those who, who may struggle with that, and three meals a day are provided. I know that a lot of the concern around a sheltering use is around safety and security, and so I want to be clear, sorry, that the shelter that is proposed, the winter sanctuary, will not serve registered sex offenders, it will not serve people with serious behavioral health challenges who cannot follow the rules of the shelter, and it will not serve people who want to use drugs or alcohol onsite. That will not be allowed. People cannot bring in weapons, drugs, drug paraphernalia. And then we also have a set of security measures. There are interior and exterior security cameras planned. PD has done a great analysis, and I won't steal the chief's thunder, because he's going to get up here and talk about it more specifically. But they have a great plan, and we, our service provider will have a minimum of two staff onsite at all times. Many times, they'll have many more staff than that, and they'll implement a nightly curfew. Exceptions to that might be made for people who go to work on a shift schedule, on a late shift, or, or get off work late, because we, of course, want to encourage people to be employed. That is a pathway to getting housing. Locating a shelter use like this is never, ever easy. I would love it if everyone could point to a location and say, hey, that's a great location. Everyone agrees. It has never happened for me. And we looked at a lot of options for this year. Measure E funding came a little bit later this year, so we didn't have the most time to plan, but we did look at some different models, including the model that Elk Grove Winds used to use, which was the rotating church model. We also talked to churches about leasing their facilities, so paying them to use their facilities. The churches we spoke with were not really receptive. They have a lot of programming in their spaces, and they, they didn't feel they could allocate much space to this use. We also looked at leasing commercial or industrial properties. We had our real estate team look at, look at several of them. There are some code, fire code challenges, especially with using warehouse spaces or large spaces. And also, what we found is that most owners of those spaces were not interested in entering into a short-term lease for just one season. And then we also looked at using vacant city-owned property, and the cost of getting structures for that, and the timeframe to connect them to water and sewer and electricity was really prohibitive. And so for this year, and this year only, we are proposing to use the city-owned building at 9260 Elk Grove Boulevard. That is the former Rite Aid and our future library location. The library is slated to go to construction in 2024, so it would not be a solution for any future year. Our hope is that in operating the sanctuary this year, that we would get data that would really allow us to figure out kind of what the needs were going forward. Do we need something more permanent? Do we need something, you know, what scale of need do we have in our community? How many people are accessing this? And really get some, some good data that we could use to drive future decisions, because we know that this facility would not be available in the future. So our process for selecting a service provider was to release a request for proposals. We released that request for proposals before we knew which of the models would work, and so we left it a little bit open-ended. We were looking for qualified service providers that had run sheltering programs in other communities, and we asked providers for both 12-hour and 24-hour models. And we asked them to provide examples of some of the forms and documents that they've used, their planning for shelters that they've run elsewhere. We received two proposals, one from the Gathering Inn and one from First Step Communities. Both are experienced shelter providers that operate in the Sacramento region. When we did our review, the Gathering Inn ranked higher, and so we are proposing to move forward with them. They are here tonight, they have their own portion of the presentation, but I'll cover a little bit of their history, and then they can dive in a little bit more. They have been around since 2004. They operated primarily in Roseville for several years, and they currently have expanded to serving more than 250 households daily in more than four locations. They really emphasize quality services in their programming, so substance use counseling, mental health, making connections to permanent housing for folks who are in shelter, and education and training that lets people be successful once they find housing. And I'm pleased that they, one of the things that was really impressive about their proposal was their, their really robust staffing plan. So they're proposing to have a lot of onsite staff, so a program director full-time, two full-time case managers, a full-time engagement specialist, a full-time substance use disorder counselor, and a half-time mental health clinician for five months. That is quite a feat to get all those folks together, and really should provide a lot of services. And then they will have nine FTEs of shelter monitors, and those would be folks who would be there 24 hours a day, whereas a lot of the services will take place during the daytime hours, of course. And then they have some other staff, some executive oversight, and a data coordinator that will help us to get meaningful data out of this. One thing that was really important to us in planning for this effort was that there be strategies in place to maintain good neighborhood relationships. To that end, the provider must identify a single point of contact, that will be their program director, for residents who have concerns, and they must respond to those concerns within 48 hours, setting up an email address that folks can contact, a phone number that folks can contact if they're having a concern that they believe is related to the sanctuary effort. And they will talk a little bit more about that tonight. We also really wanted some, some meaningful community engagement in this process, and so to that end, we are working with the Gathering Inn to plan for a community meeting and an open house before the shelter would open on November 1st. They invite community members at all of their projects to stop by and see how the operations work, and provide a lot of volunteer opportunities. They're really hoping to work with some of our civic and faith-based organizations to provide meals, similar to what Elk Grove Heart used to do. And so tonight, what we are asking the council for is authorization for the city manager to enter into a contract with the Gathering Inn to operate the Enhanced Winter Sanctuary for the 23-24 winter season. That contract includes a license for the use of the 9260 Elk Grove Boulevard building. Should the council authorize that, we will get to work on cleaning up the building, making some minor improvements to it, and working with the service provider to get the furnishings and, and get it all set up to begin operations on November 1st. I'm happy to answer, oh, I will turn it over now. Before we do questions, we'll turn it over to our chief to do his portion of the presentation.
Mayor, while the chief is walking up, I noticed the time. Do you want to wave the 10 o'clock roll this evening?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council, and our community. So, and as a part of this, we wanted to ensure that, not just for you, but our community has all the safety measures or things that we're going to be putting in place for the shelter. Clearly, it's something that is a concern for all of us, but recognizing the public safety is, is my first and foremost concern for the citizens of our community. We wanted to put something together so that they would know that this, while we, we have this sanctuary or shelter, we're also going to provide a high level of security and safety with a very visible presence of the Elk Grove Police Department at this facility while it is here. So to do that, I'll kind of go through what our plan is, and it won't be, it won't be long, but I know we don't want to stay here too long, and we all know that I talk a lot.
You might be able to.
There we go. So this is our safety and security plan, and this is our agenda, what I'm going to speak about briefly. It's going to be our cameras and our surveillance, the Elk Grove personnel, Elk Grove Police Department personnel, and our extra patrols, because we will have those, and we'll have crime prevention through the environmental design, which is our SEP-10. So our cameras and surveillance, as you can see, we have the, on the picture here, you see the Elk Grove Police Department vehicle. It's a regular squad car with cameras that are built into it, and that's going to be parked right out in front of the facility itself in the parking lot, and it's going to remain there throughout the entirety of the shelter. In addition to that, we have additional street cameras that are already affixed to the exterior of the building, our cow on wheels, or our camera on wheels, that's what this is, the cow. We also have additional camera trailers, so we will have 360 coverage around this building to ensure that the residents or the people that are in that building will make sure they can follow the rules and regulations that are set forth by not just us, but our community as well. In addition to that, we want the folks in our communities to be able to walk past this, go to Starbucks, go to the Bel Air, go to all the other areas that they're used to, and feel comfortable knowing that we have eyes on this specific area, and including all the residents that are walking through there and by there, just so that they can feel safe in their environment. The Elk Grove Police Department has two full-time homeless outreach officers who are here tonight. If you have questions for our program or what they offer, feel free to ask us, and we have a very robust system here as well. But in addition to that, the homeless outreach officers will be there. We work with our community homeless navigators to ensure that any answers or any problems that need to be addressed can be addressed if it needs to be addressed by law enforcement. To have our folks there is extremely important, and it does provide a level of comfort and safety for the community. If they have any questions, they can also reach out to me or our staff, and we will help them if there are questions or concerns that they see in and around the facility itself. Our problem-oriented policing unit will be available to sanctuary staff for any security or enforcement needs, or simply just questions, questions from our community about the things that are going on. It's extremely important for us to ensure that they know we are here for them for any concern or question that they may have. We will have extra patrols as well, not just throughout our day, but throughout our evenings. I think when most of us have our concerns, we will have extra patrols, and they will be logged. So we'll be able to go back at the end of the five months and say, we were here at this time on this day, and how many times we actually did that. And we're doing that to ensure that our community knows we're going to be there. We're going to provide a level of security and safety at this facility to ensure that the people who were there are safe, and the people in our community are going to remain safe. And again, we'll have daily check-ins by patrol. But to say all this is to say that the people that are going to be at this shelter, including the staff that's going to be working there and the community, they can reach out to us at any point. It's not specifically, but if something doesn't have to go wrong, if you have a concern, please reach out to us. Part of the safety and security plan is SEP-10, and that's crime prevention through environmental design. We've done an analysis on this facility, and it will allow Elk Grove Police Department to work alongside our partners at Public Works, our code enforcement, and the selected nonprofit, to ensure the safety measures are implemented for the safety of our residents and the sanctuary attendees. And that's important, and it really just looks at the environment itself. It ensures that we put our vehicles, our cameras, our staff in the right places and the right location to ensure the safety for the building itself and the community. And that's something that we do pretty regularly in our community. And just in closing, you know, the idea is that we can provide a level of security and safety for the folks in our community. We're going to do that to the best of our ability, obviously, but it's going to be for everybody in our community. It's going to be for the sanctuary itself, but it's also going to be for the people who have questions and concerns. And we will be there for the entirety of this project to ensure that everybody's going to be safe, and they can navigate that space in comfort, knowing that they have a level of public safety that is above reproach. And if you have any questions for me, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you. I will now invite up our nonprofit service provider, the Gathering Inn. They have three of their folks here tonight, their CEO, their chief programs officer, and their program director, who would be responsible for this site. So they have a brief presentation here, and so come on up. I will get that set up for you. I think this, the arrow keys will move you along.
So I don't get 20 minutes to present, like you said? No, I'm just kidding.
I said five to seven.
Just kidding. Keith Dietrich, president and CEO of the Gathering Inn. We're glad to be here tonight. We're glad for the meetings that we had today with Lieutenant Templeton. You got a great group, chief, with your officers that we met today. The building is fantastic for this. We could talk about the location, but the building itself is excellent for this service, and, and we're very, very proud to have been selected as the provider. We've been around since 2004. Homelessness is all that we do. And I am a very business-oriented person. That's a little unusual in the nonprofit field, but at the end of the day, our mission is to take folks experiencing homelessness and get them into sustainable housing. Everything else we do, the case management, the mental health, all that stuff works towards that goal and the philanthropy that we do as well in the community. We started as a We started as a nomadic shelter. You guys had a little bit of experience with that. We just saw 50% of our churches leave us in COVID. So that's a really tough model to have moving forward. A lot of the churches, the congregations are getting older. And a fixed site is better programmatically for the people that you serve, okay? We have 11 different physical locations, okay? With 250 people being served a day. So we're pretty proud of that. We do mobile temporary shelters. Come as you are, low barrier, like we're talking here. We do 100-bed congregate shelter. That's a barrier shelter. You have to be clean and sober. We run that, too. We run a nomadic shelter. We still run that nomadic shelter that we started in 2004. We run permanent supportive housing. And we run a really innovative medical respite program with Sutter and Kaiser. Saw a gentleman with a Kaiser shirt on here today with the Elk Run that you guys do. So we're very in tight with those providers so that when folks come out of the hospital and they're homeless, where do they go? That's that medical respite program. We've been running that since 2009. We want to partner with your community. We want to be part of this community. That's why I brought my staff with me today. Clyde, if you'd turn up, stand up just real quick. Clyde is the program director. We handed his business card out today to all the city staff. Anybody has a problem, Clyde. If Clyde doesn't pick up, I gave my phone number. Call us. We're very prideful in how we have good community relations. It's very, very important to us. Very important to us. I do want to mention this because this is a very innovative program we do. We have over 30 serve partners up in Auburn, where we have two shelters, 150 people. 50 come as you are, 100 barrier, okay? We serve three meals a day to 150 people for 15 cents a meal. 15 cents a meal. Know how we do it? We have serve partners, community groups come in. We have a mobile temporary kitchen. Folks come in, they cook meals, they feel part, like they're doing something for the community. Our guests see that, they see the love from the community that they have for them. And we partner with the Plosser Food Bank. We were with the food bank today, here in your community, talking about a partnership today. Great meeting. Fantastic meeting on how we can do that. We're not going to need that 40 grand in that budget after today. We're going to save you money there. Because we're going to have a great partnership with the food bank. And we're going to do a lot of the same things that we've know how to do to bring value to you all as a community. Your money, I'm going to treat your money like I treat my money. We're going to be good stewards of the trust that you put into us. I guarantee that. And I will hand you all my business card. You ever have a problem, a concern, call me directly. Because we want to do a good job for you folks. Because at the end of the day, our mission is to meet people where they are, give them some hope, and then walk alongside them. Don't carry them, because they have a responsibility, too, right? But walk alongside them so that they can get into sustainable housing. That's our mission, that's what we do. We're good at it. And we just appreciate the opportunity. If you decide tonight to partner with us, we really appreciate the opportunity to help you and to help your residents here in Elk Grove. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sarah, are you coming back up? Just to say that I'm happy to answer any questions, as I know the chief is or Keith is.
Okay, we'll get to that. If you don't have anything to present, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. All right. All right, at this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. Our first speaker is Gina Pernetti, followed by Linda Storm.
Hello. Mayor Singh Allen and city council members. I am Gina Pernetti. I'm a resident of East Elk Grove. And I have lived here in Elk Grove for 30 years. I'm a volunteer with Elk Grove Heart. I've been serving the unhoused community for just the last couple of years. But I do live within one mile of the proposed location for the Temporary Enhanced Winter Sanctuary. And I am in favor of this proposal. And I hope you are, too.
Thank you. Linda Storm, followed by Mark Hedlund.
Hello, I'm Linda Strom, thank you. But that's probably because of my printing. In the interest of the 10 o'clock rule, I'll keep this short. But I was one of the co-founders of the EG Wins program that you've heard so much about tonight. And the two factors that are most important to me in this proposal that you're considering is the wraparound services that are being provided and the fact that this is referral only. This is not drop-in from buses coming in from outside our community. So I'm strongly in support of this, and I hope that you are.
Thank you, ma'am. Mark Hedlund, after that is Dennis Williams.
Hi, Mayor Singh Allen and council members. I am here to applaud this effort to help the unhoused in Elk Grove. It is a long time coming. For five years, I was co-director with Fred Bremmerman with the Heart's Winter Sanctuary Program. And heretofore, it's the only shelter we ever had in town. For seven years, we ran the shelter using local churches, staffed solely with volunteers, and funded through donations. Sarah told you about that. Despite that dedicated effort, we could only provide for around 12 weeks. No more than 20 people, because churches didn't have the space, and we had to do it just overnight. We could not accommodate pets. We didn't have space for people to bring all their stuff. And those were barriers. So what is being proposed with this Enhanced Winter Sanctuary is so much more comprehensive to meet the need. And I would remind you that the prior Winter Sanctuary was, in fact, centered in Old Town. Intake every night of the program was at the United Methodist Church, which is in the Old Town District. In the seven years of Winter Sanctuary, there were no significant issues arising in the surrounding neighborhood. And our experience shows that when you set down requirements and rules, the clients will, in fact, follow those rules. We once had a complaint, I think some of you heard about this, because it was brought up here at council. The clients were congregating around the bus stop in front of the church, waiting for the check-in time. We didn't know about it. Then we heard there were complaints about it because people were afraid to use the bus stop, understandably so. Once we were advised of it, we reminded our clients that they were breaking the rules by doing it, and they were jeopardizing the entire program. That problem disappeared in one night. Because all we had to do was tell them what the rule was and how it was impacting them. It's entirely logical. Those who are using the program will police themselves to keep benefiting from the program. It happened at Heart's Winter Sanctuary, and it'll happen here. Measure E, as you know, was approved because voters recognized the need for enhanced city services, including public safety, of course, but also helping those experiencing homelessness. And were willing to pay for it with more taxes and sales tax. In the workshops, the community made clear that a winter shelter was a priority. So what is being proposed is much more so important. Vetting the clients and not just a drop-in shelter, as been mentioned before. Providing a 24-hour livable space and not just overnight shelter. And a single location for the entire five months of potential bad weather. So everybody knows where the shelter is. In my view, it checks just about every box. I've often been asked about the homeless situation, my opinion on it. And I've often told people, if there was a silver bullet, it would have been solved. This doesn't solve the problem, but it checks a lot of those boxes. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Next up is Dennis Williams, followed by Diane Lampe.
Good evening again. The homeless shelter situation here in Elk Grove is an amazing thing to be a witness to and to work among in my own personal life. So it started out with me, just of being in a crew of people that serve dinners and make the food at our homes and bring it to the site. And then we get to sit down with homeless people, eat dinner, and then they're provided a sleeping area and a nice place to be. These are homeless people that don't live on a river or live in a creek or live somewhere out in our region. These are people that actually feel like they can come to a place that will give them a great dinner and food. We also work to gather supplies for homeless people from the neighborhoods. And we encourage people to give us their fruit or their, you know, parts of their garden during the same time. And so we have a crew that will go out and actually get the food that we can use. And otherwise, we give it to the food bank. But it's all part of homeless, things they need at homeless shelter. Things they need are things that we all need. Water, products like food, clothing, blankets. Last year, we gave out 1,300 blankets to homeless people that were given to us by goodwill. We were really excited about that. We tried to obtain blankets in other ways. But this was the very best, and they really came through for us. So they like products like clothing, blankets, dog food, water, a sandwich or two, vegetables, candy, fresh fruit. They like, we take them, dog food, they do have dogs. And so I really came here to just kind of pat all these people on the back because their program is really exciting. It only lasts a few months. And it's very safe with the police department that we have, which is really great, as you're, sometimes I'm in the same buildings they are. And it's really a great program. And I hopefully, I really want you to support them.
Thank you, sir.
Vote for them. And they enhance our city greatly.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks a lot.
Next up is Diane Lampe, then Frank Lucia.
Good evening, and I'm going to be really brief because it is late. I'm Diane Lampe, and I'm with Elk Grove Heart. I've worked with the unhoused through the school districts for a good 20, 25 years. And I've been volunteering with Heart for five. I want to really support tonight the wisdom that Sarah has brought to bringing this program together. As she explained it, she's taken all the salient points of the things that have happened through the years of wins and other places to bring in the wisdom to really put together a program that sounds exciting. And I just want to say how much I support this, and I hope that we can make it happen.
Thank you. Frank, followed by Robert Lindner.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and Elk Grove City Council members. As we all know, providing resources and safety for the unhoused in any community is complicated and has several challenges. My name is Frank Lucia, and I have worked with the homeless in our community for the past 12 years. I am the co-founder of Elk Grove Heart and have been involved in a variety of programs to provide for those in need in our community. Addressing the needs of the unhoused is like a puzzle. Pieces of this complex puzzle is starting to fit together to provide long-term solutions. Elk Grove Heart has provided mentors and funding to operate three transitional homes in Elk Grove. The Uplift Program at the United Methodist Church is providing life skills and training for those who have worked through, throughout, through their, worked their way out of homelessness. Two police officers and a full-time navigator are now staffed by the city to identify unhoused individuals and families and direct them to resources such as a food bank. The Wellness Center, operated by Turning Point, has just opened and is providing mental health services and resources that connect people to government assistance programs. The piece of the puzzle that is missing is consistent shelter for the unhoused. The proposed Enhanced Winter Shelter Program will provide a select few of unhoused in Elk Grove to stabilize, receive basic healthcare needs, safety, and government assistance. Some will move into transitional housing and/or permanent housing while in the shelter. When Heart operated the Winter Shelter Program for seven years, opportunities were provided to many of our regular attendees to enter our transitional housing program. Some never returned to the streets again. The proposed Enhanced Winter Program will increase the success rate of moving people out of inhumane living conditions during the winter. Your support of the Winter Shelter Program in Elk Grove is strongly encouraged and is supported by Elk Grove Heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Robert Lindner, and then Lynn Wheat.
I'm shocked that I'm the first person that opposes this homeless shelter. I've lived in Elk Grove for 20 years now. I'm a retired police officer with 23 years of service. I have a pretty good idea of what the homeless population is and the problems that come around from it. I'm not against homeless people. I'm against the problems that arise from services that treat homeless people. Just look at the downtown Sacramento. If you build it, they will come. And now I'm starting to believe that Elk Grove government wants to go home and feel good about themselves because they helped the homeless people. And they don't care anything about the residents that live in that neighborhood and their quality of life that goes down. The police department says they're going to put cameras up? Whoop-de-doo. What's that going to do? It's not going to do anything. You need to put police officers in there to keep the bad element away from that shelter. It's not the people in the shelters you need to worry about. It's their friends and associates that aren't vetted, that aren't screened. The ones that go and sell them drugs because they're addicted to drugs. You already have security working at a Bel-Air right across the street because you have homeless people coming in there stealing alcohol from them. You have Bel-Air there. They're going to have to staff security there 24/7 now because there's going to be increased shoplifting there. Where are these people going to go when they can't have their friends with them at the shelter? They're going to hang out at the businesses. They're going to hang out. They're going to buy alcohol. Where? Across the street, at Bel-Air, at CVS that serves alcohol. You're just bringing a bad element to a neighborhood that's not meant for housing homeless people. There's plenty of other places. Let's go big. Let's go, let's use District 56. We can house way more than 30 homeless people there. What about the Wackford Center? Let's partner with CSD. Let's get our parks into this. We can make huge homeless encampments in our parks. Let's utilize the annexed land for the soccer complex that was never built. We could build a huge tent city there for homeless. See, what you're going to do now is word gets out on the street with the homeless. Hey, come to Elk Grove. There's services there for you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone that's lived in Elk Grove is seeing the homeless
Next.
encroach more and more and more.
Next up is Lynn Wheat, then Troy Wilson.
I'm going to be really brief. But Mayor, I want to thank you for kind of setting the table with people's behavior on the last item. Because when I spoke to it the first time, I was... time, I was booed. So I think that you saved me from being booed again. However, I'll start this. When I did sit down, somebody had to say that I don't live in the neighborhood where the 67 Oak Grove apartments were going to go. And actually, I do. I'm within a mile, and I walk down there all the time. So likewise, I would be near the shelter. I think it's a wonderful, absolutely wonderful idea to have that there, that we're going to have the support that we need for our residents that are unhoused, and that I'm hearing that this winter is going to be really wet. So wouldn't it be great that they'd have a dry place to be? So most certainly, I hope that you will support this. I thank Sarah for all of her hard work getting this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Troy Wilson, followed by Randy Becker.
Good evening. I'm actually Troy Winslow. I'm the managing pastor for Creekside Christian Church. Haven't always agreed with city council, but I wanted to come and show and give you, lend you my full support of this program. Because we have, as Creekside, we have been a warming center, we have been a winter sanctuary. We have, and I know there are some, some grunts from the audience, I know for a fact we have never had an issue. I do not agree with the Oak Rose previously, but this, you're doing right. Sarah, that was a remarkable plan that you've put together to actually extend grace to these people. Often, we just call them homeless. They are people. It's our opportunity, it's our responsibility to extend grace to them in a measured way. And I think you guys have done a great job, and with Chief Davis's support, I think you've got a perfect plan, and we support you. And by the way, Creekside's been here for 99 years, serving this community, and we're proud of this community, and we're proud of you for undertaking this.
Thank you, sir. Randy Becker, followed by William Myers.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Mr. Berman, it was great to have the conversation we had the other day on the telephone, and I appreciate that. Same with you, Mr. Berman. I appreciate that. Both conversations were well-informed. But unfortunately, I have to talk about something else. Mr. Speace brought up a few meetings ago about, admonished a developer about lack of community And the rollout of this project was the fact of the lack of community involvement. My phone was blowing up, conversations were sporadic, no information. We know the RFP went out in August. Why wasn't the community informed? You know, I made mention of this to a number of staff members. We did meet with staff, and we were grateful for their time this week, which helped fill in a lot of things. But unfortunately, when we have projects like this, even if it's a city project, we've got to be at the table, or at least when you go out the door, conversations have got to be made. Whether it's in person or through Zoom, we've got to go back to that. I think in a lot of ways, you know, we've, post-COVID, we've kind of gotten away from that, but I know prior to that, you know, in Mr. Soon's district, I went to a number of hot button items to find out information, support, or listen. We got to get back to that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. William Myers, and then Lisa Gurul, Guruli. Someone will correct me.
Mayor Singh Allen, Council. Thank you very much. First of all, I just want to say I want to completely and enthusiastically support Mark Headland and others, like in the same vein, who have supported this proposal. I think it meets so many needs. I'm not going to try and do that. I want to add one thing to that. What's really important about this is the daytime services. I mentioned it earlier before, that my time I put in receiving people back at EG Win, coming in the morning and talking to them. And I felt so much was being lost because they were there and needed contact, and then they're going to disappear and sometimes into the rain. This solves that problem. What's important about it is it allows other community organizations, such as the one I was with, you know, the church, okay, to get involved and keep on working with it. And that was brought up by the, by the head of the group taking this over. I think that is terribly important because it gives our community a chance to get involved with the actual relationship with these people over a period of time and help resolve some of the problems that have given to the homeless. Thank you very much, and I really hope you support this.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Lisa, followed by Michael Monaski.
Hello. Thank you for listening to us tonight. I have a statement to make. In May, myself and my young grandson were at CVS shopping. We came out of the store, we're standing, I was fumbling with my purse. He was standing right next to me. A homeless man started screaming at us, started chasing us around the parking lot. We should have ran back into the store, but we did not. My poor grandson, Mikey, I'm just like, you got to get in the car. This guy is after us. So we finally get to the car, and I'm shaking like crazy. I do want to say that I, it makes me feel better, this program, but you're, I mean, that's great and all, but we're going to need support. We're going to have to call the police right and left, I have a feeling, and I'm very, very, very concerned. I'm concerned for my grandkids. They, they're young, they're all, we go to Starbucks, we go to CVS, we, we're not going to be able, Bel-Air twice in the last three weeks. As I was there, a homeless person shoplifted, and they were chasing him out the door. That's already now. What is going to happen to our small community back there? I've been in Elk Grove for 36 years, and I don't want to see what happened to us happen to another, I, I mean, gosh, it's just horrible. But it's, it's happening, and we have nothing, nothing we could do about it unless we move out. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Monaski, then Peggy Forsyth Andrews.
I'm concerned about the cost of this project and what its substitutes and what it subsidizes. It's a $600,000 project that assists 30 individuals, and apparently Apple shift workers are included, along with other shift workers, right? And anyway, that $600,000 is to hire 14 and 1/2 full-time employees. People, to assist 30 people in not being homeless for a five-month period, that comes to about $20,000 a month, which is better than the $36,000 that the CEO's program does. It's $9 million a year and assists 250 people at 11 facilities. He said homelessness is all we do. I suggest that he change his logo because that just indicates how big a business this is. People who work should be able to afford housing. Not this plan. This plan does not work. Affordable housing is what we need, not homeless programs, and you're sitting on your hands, all of you. You're not doing your job. You should be incorporating affordable housing within our community. In addition to that $600,000 cost, apparently, there's extra police security costs, and man, we're going to crack down on these people because, you know, they are the flotsam and jetsam of society. They're the subhuman, you know, folks that people have talked about. I'm wondering if the chief of police can get off his phone there, just to hear what I'm saying. You're going to have a camera truck, you're going to have a surveillance personnel looking at the stuff on this camera truck. One of your, one of the former police officers said, gee, that's not going to be very effective. And you're going to have extra patrols. How much is that going to add to our $600,000 cost? Apple CEO Tim Cook is a billionaire. In 2021, he sold 5 million shares for a $750 million payout. He can afford it. He can afford to pay his employees a better wage so that they can afford to live in affordable housing. This is unacceptable. Why aren't employers paying well enough to enable workers to have the dignity, the dignity of living in their own homes? This is, this is unconscionable, unconscionable, that you have not done your jobs. And like I said before, and I'll just close with this, I think sometimes, you know, the old stuff, you know, Mike Guttridge's plan was, you know, wasn't perfect, but at least he incorporated small enclaves of five plexes and so on in his plans. And I, we need to have more of that kind of stuff, you know, more concentrated housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Peggy Forsyth Andrews, and then Susan Pope.
Thank you for allowing me to address you again. I'm here as a businessperson in Old Town, and this is my concern, is that at no point that I'm aware, the business community was at all asked about their thoughts, about their concerns. With all due respect to Mr. Headland and the program that comes out of the Methodist Church, there were problems in the adjoining neighborhoods. I live in one of the adjoining neighborhoods, as well as we have had tremendous problems down Elk Grove Boulevard. We have had fires, we have had vandalism, we have had theft, we have been threatened as business owners, we have had our customers threatened. Now, I believe in this program. I support the Volunteers of America, who probably provide more services in, of this kind throughout Sacramento County and throughout the country. But I question the location. I don't think it's probably the best location, but it appears that that may already be a done deal, to be honest. But what I would suggest is, if you are going to move forward, that we have a specific meeting with business owners and the adjoining neighborhood, and let those individuals speak to the provider, voice their concerns, have a contact person. Chief, my question, please, is, I noticed there was going to be no sexual registrants. You and I both know, I work for the DA's office, you and I both know that not all sexual convictions are registerable. What about the other individuals that are convicted of sexual crimes? Are they going to be allowed into the program? That's another question I have, because you have a school across the street, and you have children walking back and forth. So that is a consideration that maybe want to take into. But I would really appreciate a meeting so that we knew who we could talk to and how we can prevent some of these problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Susan Pope will be our last speaker.
First of all, thank you all for what you do for the homeless community. I do have two concerns. The first concern is this is costing $4,000 a month per person. Is that the best fit for $4,000 a month? What is the success rate of taking them from homeless winter shelters and putting them into sustainable housing? They are making, we are spending more than most of our seniors and our housed veterans make a month. We're spending on the homeless. That's my first concern. Is it fiscally responsible to do that? Can we put them into programs and transition them in? We're paying a mortgage for them, plain and simple, for each one of them under one roof. The second thing is, my biggest concern is I feel like we're talking out of both sides of our mouth. In the previous meeting, we are establishing that this is not the right location for homeless. What signal are we sending to the state when we accept this at this location, but we're fighting them against them building a facility right next to the same location? I really believe it's the wrong signal. Not against the program, completely against the location. I believe it will come back to bite us and you all in your meeting with the state, saying, yes, we accept this, we embrace this wholeheartedly, this is perfect, and then we're asking them to move what they're proposing, forcing down our throat. So please consider, different location, great program, not sure it's the best use of funds.
Thank you. And I, that is our final public comment, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. Um, Sarah, if you could come back up before I go to council, is anything you or the chief want to respond to based on things you heard?
I would say that we are planning a community meeting, and I would love the opportunity to invite the business owners, and I'm sure that the Gathering Inn would be happy with that plan as well. I think that would be a great opportunity for us to educate and get to know everyone so that they have the proper contacts if they are experiencing problems.
Wonderful. Thank you. You have a date and location yet?
We, we are still working on a date and a location, but we will communicate that via our usual channels, and I'll see if I can work with our economic development team to get the best list of businesses in the Old Town area.
Okay, and then obviously let us know as well.
Of course.
And then the chief, do you have?
Before you leave on that, if you, if any of you are interested in being in that list to be contacted.
Get your information.
Please provide your information to Sarah, please.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
And any, do you want to provide anything before we go to council comments?
Yes, ma'am. So I would say just the one comment regarding the cameras and the things that we have. The Elk Grove Police Department and the Elk Grove community has allowed us, and you as council, have allowed us to have extremely enhanced security measures in our city. We have, we use electronics to not only utilize a force multiplier, but we use that in everyday policing in our city. Unlike some of the other cities in our county, we are farther and greater advanced when it comes to those things. So when we say we're going to put cameras out, those cameras are actually monitored cameras. We were able to get on those if there is an incident or something that happens relatively quickly if we're not actually watching them. So it just, it, you know, to inform the people who have questions about our use of technology, we're a little bit different than the rest of the law enforcement in this region. So we will have services in place if something does happen.
Okay, very good. All right, I'll start with our council comments. I'll go to the left here. Council member Soon?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank Sarah for all your work and diligence in this effort. I know Vice Mayor Speace and I on the homelessness committee, we, you know, witnessed firsthand all the work you put into this, and I think you did a great job and selected a very good partner. I want to thank the Gathering Inn for being here tonight and your dedication, passion, and commitment to our community. Stark contrast to the last item, you know, that, I mean, it, it shows, yeah, you showed up, you, you know, your dedication, you're working with the city, you understand that, you know, the, first of all, the need, of course, to give housing to our homeless population, but also the needs of our community in trying to keep everybody, you know, safe and address their concerns. So I can't emphasize this enough, you know, that, that means a lot to me in this conversation. And while not perfect, I mean, we heard, you know, Ms. Forsyth Andrews and Mr. Becker in terms of the process and some issues with previous winter sanctuaries, but I do believe, I have faith that, you know, this will go over much better than, you know, unfortunately, the previous partner. So, I mean, I want to regress into that, but I also want to just mention that, you know, I had the chance to tour the winter sanctuary when our Heart folks were operating that. Linda, Mark, and others did a great job managing that, and that it was, it was ran well overall, I would say. And if it's the same, you know, there's a mention of the Apple, that individual that worked at Apple, if it's the same individual, it is heartbreaking, you know? I had a chance to interview that individual. Again, if it's the same way, you know, he literally has children that he has to stay in a hotel with during the weekend when he has them. He's, you know, he's divorced, and then he ends up going to the sanctuary. So there's, there's a So there, there's, there's, there's a great, a lot of reason to have, to have empathy there. And I understand that it is, that does sound expensive, but this isn't just the regular folks that are living under, under the roof, because it isn't just about the mortgage and the roof over the head, it's about the services that are provided to, to support them. So that the concerns that are, some of our residents feel because that individual might be out on the, on the street, needs some extra help, it's so that doesn't happen, so that, so they're not chasing you around the parking lot. They're, they're actually having somebody there to, to help them and provide them services. That's why it costs a little bit more. And it's for our community, so I say it's worth it. If you feel a little safer because we're able to house people, get them the services they need and you in the community feel safer, then it's worth it, in my opinion. Um, again, I want to thank the, the Gathering Inn and we, it's our first experience together, but from, you know, hearing your testimony tonight, I, I have a lot of hope that it's gonna, it's gonna go well and lead to future things. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Spies?
Okay, well, I know it's getting late, but I do need to start again with another personal story. Has nothing to do with me riding a bike this time. So, um, I have a family member who lives on the river. And it's difficult for my family. There's a lot of shame involved. There's a lot of sadness because we would love, really love to get them help. And this family member has been resistant. And we know that if we had help from, from government, right? I don't want to, I don't want to poke in anybody's eye today, but tonight, I should say. But if we had help, um, we could, we could get that family member some help. And so it's, it's very, this, the homelessness task force is, is extremely personal to me. I want to give a huge nod to Elk Grove Heart. I've, I've had an opportunity a couple of times, not, not a whole lot of times, but maybe three or four times to, to participate in, in the winter sanctuary. And I got to tell you, just as with my family member, a lot of them are difficult to love. But they are creatures of God and they deserve love and respect and opportunity. I recognize that, you know, you can't, it's, it's a very difficult group of folks to help and to change. So one of the things that I appreciate about this is having the opportunity to give them 24 hours of attention. Because we now have an opportunity to ask them and to talk to them and to build relationships with them in the hopes of getting them some help. I recognize that, um, you know, folks may not be thrilled with the location. It's been location, location, location tonight. I think we would all love to have a different location. We'd love to have something a little more permanent, a little, something that is, uh, you know, that would give some certainty over the long haul. This is a very short period of time. The library will be built on time, I'm hoping, please don't, please don't slip a day on me because after, after tonight, I don't know. But, um, we're going to be building that library and it'll only be for the four months. So, um, I'm, I'm definitely supportive of it. I, I really appreciate Gathering Inn, I appreciate your, your, your fire and your vigor and, and I intend, if you have volunteer opportunities, I certainly intend to be there. Uh, I don't cook very well, so if that's what you're after, I'm like, I'm good with bologna sandwiches. Um, but, you know, we're going to do our best, um, in, in Elk Grove style to make sure that it's kept clean, to make sure that not just the residents of the temporary winter sanctuary are safe, but the surrounding community is safe as well. Um, I'm, I wish this was an opportunity that could be, could be elsewhere. But, um, I'm really glad and I'm proud that we're able to do this in the city of Elk Grove. I want to thank Sarah Bontrager, who at times I'm at odds with, I'll admit that right up front. But I think she's done a very good job with this and to the rest of the staff who I'm certain who have helped. There's two people, I don't remember their names, help me, Sarah.
Haimano and Jack.
Haimano and Jack. Please thank them very much, right? Okay, so with that, I support the project.
Thank you. Council member Brewer?
I want to thank Ms. Bontrager for providing the overview and describing the project to me in its early stages and getting me around to embracing the concept of it. Can't make the perfect the enemy of the good. We have to provide a humanitarian service and look out for our fellow man. I know the last issue is the last issue. I'm bifurcating the two because this is for a season and it's just definitely for a reason. I like what the Gathering Inn and their concept of serving the public and how they do it. This is really good. And I really like that with this, it picks up, carries forward, not picks up where Elk Grove Heart left off, it picks up and carries forward. And so the nexus is there, the partnerships are there, the wraparound services are still going to be intertwined and that's good for, for us and, uh, for us as the community, not just for us as the city, because that sounds too selfish. This is a holistic effort. And when you have that accountability and the increased public safety and the increased safety that will be in place, and when I say public safety, I mean that presence that Elk Grove Police will have. I have every faith and trust in Chief Davis and Chief Solomon and that team to work with the Gathering Inn to make this successful. And it's not the Gathering Inn all by itself because they met with the Elk Grove Food Bank earlier today. I was at the Elk Grove Food Bank earlier today, just mere minutes in between those meetings. And then on top of that, as I left the Elk Grove Food Bank, I saw your team make, making the rounds at the complex itself. It's like when you see Mr. Dieteric and his team working with the city and looking at the site, doing some inspections, that means they're engaged. They want to make a work. The only, the only, I think the only thing I carry a heavy heart in is that we were unable to meet with the public before and, and, and listen to those concerns and figure out how we can work and find that middle ground, because now it feels like we're having to pick up late and do that. But at least we are doing it, hopefully we do it very soon, because, um, because the folks in that neighborhood, they're going to be directly affected and they, they do deserve to know what's going on and how, how it's going to affect them, um, because 30 people is 30 people. But as one person said, you're going to have friends and those friends are going to be around and they're going to be bad influences and we have to figure out a way to mitigate that. They're going to come, but we got to figure out a way to mitigate that off at the pass. And like I said, it's for a season, five months. We're not going to fool people on April 1st and still be there. We will shut it down. But, um, I have every faith and confidence that we can do some good with this, enhance winter, winter sanctuary. It's something we've been doing for many years at United Methodist Church and we're going to do it at, at, at the Rite Aid, but when that, but when April 1st comes, no April Fools, we will build that library. Vice Mayor Spies and I sit on the Sacramento Public Library Joint Power Authority, which we have a meeting tomorrow. And we were able to secure funding for the library to help us build out and have it ready for the public by late 2025. That is a certain. It's not closing, it's not moving. That is hard in. We're not going to give a specific date, but it will be late 2025. So with that said, I do support this and, and I want to thank, like I said, I want to thank the city, I want to thank Ms. Bontrager, I want to thank Chief Davis and thank, um, Mr. Dieteric for working with us and for everything that Elk Grove Hearts and Elk Grove and EG Winds has done over the years, along with the Elk Grove Food Bank, is a sincere and hearty thank you for everything you've done for our community. Thank you so much.
Council member Robles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, um, Council member Brewer, for those words. I want to thank everyone for still being here. You guys are committed. This is commitment, um, so thank you for that. Um, thank you, Sarah, for presenting to us and thank you, is it Pete?
I'm Keith.
Keith, thank, Keith, thank you for, for being here and, and giving us an update as well. Um, I, I do want to emphasize, and I know everybody already emphasized it, this is winter sanctuary, right? This is for a few months, um, this is for five months. And this is honestly to help out those who want to be helped. Um, there is a vetting process, if I'm not mistaken, um, and it's for folks who want to make a difference. I know that, um, I also want to say, before I go into that, I want to, I want to say, Lisa, I'm sorry that you went through that. And I'm sorry that you went through that in our city.
It's the RDS.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry about that.
My grant is still.
And, and I know that, that it's, it's traumatizing and, and again, I am sorry that you went through that. Um, and we're working as a city to be better and to do better and also provide services that we then can be very proud of, especially in this region. So, so again, I'm sorry that you went through that. I, I am, Kevin, thank you for, or Vice Mayor, sorry. Thank you for sharing your story, because we, we need to hear stories like this. It, it personally impacts us. You know, we can just say it's, it's another person on the street, but no, it's, it's our family members, it's our neighbors. And we in the community need, need to hear this. So thank you for sharing that and thank you for being vulnerable with us. This is a vulnerable community. Someone came up and said, we need to build more affordable housing. We've been doing it. The only thing is no one ever hears about it because there's no one ever in the audience when we do it. Um, you know, again, we passed the project with so many units and, and we made a big deal about balconies. Again, no one in the audience except us complaining about it, right? So we're doing everything we can to provide the affordable housing. I understand what it means to live paycheck to paycheck. Um, I know that many folks say, you as a council member, you make so much money and I want to just kind of squash that. Not everybody is well off. Um, and, and I will speak candidly and openly, you know, there was a point where even me, I was living paycheck to paycheck, right? And I'm a council member, that's crazy, right? So I, I 100% understand, but I also 100% understand that we need to help those who, and I think it was the pastor that said it, and I don't know if he's still here, but we need to walk along with folks. We need to be there for folks. Substance abuse is a big thing. We might not see it because folks might wear it pretty good, right? But that's a really big impact and has an impact on families and it has an impact on obviously spending money and then leading to homelessness. So sometimes the faces that we see, we don't truly see, right? So I'm excited for what you're going to be doing and I'm excited the work that you'll be doing. And I think we also need to see that the work that you've been doing, it has been in Roseville. It's like, right?
Um, Roseville, Auburn, kind of different locations, but.
Which, which is interesting because, I mean, as a city, we always compare to Roseville or Folsom and restaurants that they have and all this, right? And they're also attempting to lead and, and are leading in this situation as well. So I think it's very important for us to, as a city, to come together and, um, work towards a goal. Again, it's going to be for five months. I'm willing to commit myself a 24-hour full cycle to be there, to witness, to see, and let it be on the hard days. Let me know which day it is that you want me there and I'll be there for 24 hours. We'll probably need like a couple rests, but I, I will commit myself to doing this because one, I want to see the work that you do. I want to see the faces because it changes perception, right? And you also said you want to work with the businesses. I'm, I am believing that you sincerely and really do want to work with the businesses. Um, and in that conversation, when you have that community conversation, I know either some can go or some can't go, I understand that. But, but I truly do hope that even some of the business owners that were here today, that they will be invited to this conversation. And again, I want to emphasize that this location is going to be a library in 2025. So let's do this together as a community, let's walk together as a community, and if you have an opportunity to volunteer, let's volunteer. Like, let's, let's just stop talking about this and let's start putting into actions. And I will be the first one to commit. I know Vice Mayor Spies already said he's committed, but I'm committed too, so.
Thank you. Thank you to all my colleagues for your very thoughtful, meaningful comments, particularly you Vice Mayor. Uh, we've talked about this before and I think it is important to share those stories because these are human beings. And homelessness is not a crime. Let's be clear. This is the right thing to do. The wraparound services are needed. Our community spoke. There is an expectation to deliver. And I'm grateful, Sarah, that you've come, come together with a great program, a plan of action for us to support. To the Gathering Inn, thank you. Thank you for being here. I think if you stuck around for the whole meeting, you'll know what that means. Um, it makes a difference because we want to see and know the commitment and be able to ask you questions and look you in the eye and provide those assurances to our residents. And you've done that. You've come here with sincerity and authenticity that you're committed to not only our residents, but particularly, um, Old Town Elk Grove and making sure that they are a part of, of this journey. And I want to thank our chief. I think that that presentation, um, should go a long way for addressing a lot of those public safety concerns. And I think just really the presentation overall between Sarah and our chief, that presentation, we, you know, please share that with the residents, um, because just that in and of itself should address a lot of the concerns. Um, thank you to Elk Grove Heart for all of the work that you've done, being on the forefront, taking care of our community. Thank you is not enough. And this work continues, this is ongoing. I would like to see us already, and I know you already are, Sarah, planning for next year, so that we are ahead of this. You know, right now, we had restrictions on time. And so with those restrictions, we had the best available location that was ready right now. And so I appreciate that we were able to get to this evening because we do have a responsibility to take care of people. And so we will be able to provide that winter sanctuary because we all know those horrible, horrible rainy nights where it didn't meet those Cal OES standards, there were human beings outside, outside. And just as uncomfortable and miserable as we are, think about those that don't have choices. I'm grateful that we have a choice, that we have a sanctuary for them. As someone who has served on the Elk Grove Food Bank board for a number of years, the face of hunger and homelessness is not what you expect. It's not always what you can just, you know, stereotype. It, it could easily be people that we know. And, you know, those turkey drives when we're passing out those food, you know, the food baskets during Thanksgiving, I'm always amazed as who comes by. So the face of hunger and need is everywhere and we all have a responsibility to help. So my ask is to start looking for next year, of course, the community meeting. I know that, um, council member Brewer, since it's his district, and I of course would like to be there as the mayor and be a part, just to, to observe and making sure that the community feels included. And thank you again to our partner and to Keith for, through the Gathering Inn, for being also a part of that outreach effort. I think it is so important. And I know that our community will, will rise to this. Our community always rallies in times of need. When their concerns are sort of taken care of, we will be there for each other. We will be there for each other like we've always been there for each other. So with that, um, I have no additional questions. I will look for a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Also, I'm willing to work for an Elk Grove Heart shirt, so. Excel, please. Thank you.
Um, we've already taken care of 9.2. Um, we've already taken care of 9.2, so we're on item number 10, which is council comments, reports and future agenda items. Does anybody have a report they would like to share? To the left, anything?
I don't. I would just, uh, remind us that we're closing in honor tonight of Specialist Ty Johnson. Uh, he passed, uh, April 4th, 2006. He gave his life in combat and also to his mother, Lisa, and the rest of the family.
Yes. Any comments, um, agenda items or comments? Council member Robles, no? No? Either of you, yes or no? Okay, somebody say something.
No comments.
Come on. We want to close.
I had STA and SACRT, so that was it. So, um, thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you to the audience, for those that have been with us since, um, 6:00 PM. And, um, tonight, we will adjourn in the memory of Ty Johnson. Specialist. May his memory be a blessing and to all those Gold Star families, we met a number of mothers today. Um, it is heartbreaking and let us all remember that freedom is not, does not come free. Let their memory be a blessing to all those that knew him. Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.